Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 21st, 2023 Meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. I'll call the meeting to order. As usual, I'm going to begin the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. First order of business is announcements. I just want to remind townspeople that your excise bills are due on Monday, so get those paid. There's an online option. Of course, you can pay them in person, and you can always mail them in. And we want to recognize and thank firefighter Siliberto, who is wrapping up here in town. I think he's done. He's just taking a little bit of time off. I had the chance to meet Ricky several times, which is wonderful. So we wish him all the best. And we will be talking later in the meeting about the replacements and who will be in that spot. So stay tuned for that. But thank you to firefighter Siliberto. We enjoyed having him here. Anything?
Well, just Brian's not able to be here tonight. So we wish Brian to get back here quickly, so.
Yes, just us two tonight.
That's fine.
That's fine. We can do it. But we do miss Brian. I guess that's it. I mean, recognition to the DPW. We had a difficult storm last week. That was a tough one. And actually, police and fire as well, because I know they were busy with some transformers and limbs down. And I'm sure there were other things, too, that they responded to. So appreciate those departments, as usual, during that storm. Marlene, do you have any announcements, anything?
I don't.
Just that's it? That's it, Ed?
And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the amended minutes for January 24th, 2023, and February 28th, 2023.
So we have to rescind first, right?
Yes, I was going to say there's two votes that you need to take regarding the January 24th.
First, we have to rescind the January 24th minutes.
Right, because those had been approved. Yeah, so there's a vote to rescind the vote approving the January 24th, 23 minutes, and then vote to approve the January 24th, 23 minutes as amended.
Okay, I'll take back my motion. I will first make a motion to rescind the minutes from January 24th, 2023, that were approved on February 7th, 2023.
Second. A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the amended January 24th, 2023, and February 28th, 2023.
Second. A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone here for public forum? Okay. So we can hop right into the agenda, which is great, because we actually have a pretty full, pretty full meeting tonight. So our first order of business is a request from the Hatfield Cultural Council for the approval to hold a music event at Smith Academy Park on June 30th, from 7:00 to 8:30. Do you want to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself? And?
Hello, I'm DeBora, major, and newly volunteering on the Hatfield Cultural Council. And I stepped up as secretary.
Thank you.
So we were really pleased with our requests, and we approved and stayed within our budget. We'd like to have use of the Smith Academy Park for a concert, as you mentioned, on June 30th, from 7:00 to 8:30. Setup would be earlier. Breakdown would be a little after that. We were hoping to have a rain date set so that we wouldn't have to move it indoors. And we were asking for a rain date of July 14th. We were aware of the Celebration Committee's Third Friday of the month. So we know about those dates, but we weren't aware of any other dates that might conflict.
Yeah, the last time I checked the calendar, there isn't anything, any events scheduled yet this summer.
Even for the Celebration Committee?
I don't, I haven't received anything from them.
No? Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about the concert? I'm just curious. I'm sure townspeople would like to hear.
Well, we had a lot of requests for events to be funded that weren't really directly affecting our immediate community, like community at large, for the whole valley. This particular one wanted to come to Hatfield and present a musical event. It's based on Crosby, Still, Nash, and Young music.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so feels like a good fit for our town. And we also approved something that Ken Streetworth had submitted, but we're talking about that being folded into the Celebration Committee's calendar. So there's really only one concert that we're looking at finding a schedule for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
And we're hoping to, you know, have a really nice turnout. It's free, of course, because it's funded by the Massachusetts Cultural Council.
That sounds great. I mean, Marlene, was there, there was an application and all that completed?
They had, no, an application wasn't completed, just a, you know, a written request. So you're still looking to use the park on June 30th with a rain date of July 14th?
Yeah, we actually were denied the previous.
I'm sorry, that's right, the June.
We were denied the previous date that we had suggested because it conflicted with the Third Friday. No, no, you know what? It was the high school graduation. Yeah, so that was, that was good that that all got worked out. So yeah, so now we're looking at June 30th with a rain date of July 14th.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Sounds good. Thank you for stepping up to the cultural council. Appreciate it.
It's my pleasure.
It's really nice to have these events in town. It really is. We appreciate it, so.
Yeah, well, once it gets on the calendar, we're excited for it to be listed anywhere that the town promotes, you know, calendar events. So we hope to also do what the Celebration Committee does, which is just put up signs in town so people see it as they're driving by.
Maybe stuff on social media.
Yeah, definitely, like the Facebook page of the town.
Great, great. So do we need to do an official vote to allow that?
Vote to, yes. Accept use of the park for June 30th with a rain date of July 14th.
So I'll make a motion for the Hetro Cultural Center to use the park on June 30th with a rain date of July 14th.
Second. A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So my understanding is that there's power?
There is power. Out on the pad, out here in the park, there is an outlet.
Is there anything else I need to know to give to the band about what they can expect?
You know, some band members like to have a tent. We don't, the town does not have a tent that we provide, so they might want to think about bringing a tent, if that's what they're interested in.
Well, of course, the rain date is helpful with that, rather than moving it inside. But I wasn't aware of an application, so.
So speaking to the application, the Select Board is looking at an application, a process. And actually, we tabled it last year, and we need to return to reviewing that application.
But if you feel like all the, what we would have asked is in the request, then?
Yeah.
Okay, so in the future?
But for now, you're good. You're good right now, okay?
Awesome, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to it.
Yeah. Okay, so next, Marlene, we have a, some of these items. A disclosure.
Yeah, so the board acknowledged this at the last meeting, but the board didn't vote to approve the disclosure. So Sean would still like to file this disclosure statement, and then it just requires the chair to sign.
This is just because Sean Robinson is on the comprehensive plan, and he works for ServiceNet, and they're going to be providing some catering.
It's pretty, yes, it is.
Okay.
It's very clear.
So I will make a motion that we acknowledge. Is that all we have to do?
Vote to accept the disclosure.
Vote, okay. So I'll make a motion that we vote to accept the disclosure by Sean Robinson.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that looks like it's just for my signature, Marlene?
Yes.
Okay. Moving right along.
The next item, just for informational purposes at this time, the Town of Whately Administrator, Town Administrator, reached out to me. They are anticipating a road project. And I believe a copy of the email from Mr. Domina, the Town Administrator, was included in your packet. So they're going to require some easements from the Town of Hatfield. And most recently, Mr. Domina communicated to me that he doesn't believe this project will, you know, prompt Whately to seek those easements at this time, that it will occur before next year, before Hatfield's annual town meeting next year.
I'm trying to see where this is. Like, I'm having trouble.
Well, basically, the way the project is, is they're fixing the road.
Right, it's a MassDOT project.
There's a piece of land.
Which road?
That North Hampton owns, but it's on Hatfield property. So they're still trying to figure out whether this will have to go to town meeting in Hatfield or not to get the easement.
The property is actually owned by North Hampton, the city of North Hampton, but it's in Hatfield.
Right, but it's in Hatfield.
What are we talking about? I can't even see it.
Haydenville Road near the end of the road.
So it's just a, okay.
Yeah.
So they're going to just, they're making us aware, and they're going to keep us posted?
Right.
Correct, because we may, there may be a requirement to get a vote from Hatfield to grant the easement.
Okay.
So I will keep you updated as that develops. And next, the board is receiving a citizen's petition for the May 9th Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
We don't need any action on this, right?
The board needs to vote to accept the petition for the town meeting warrant.
Okay.
You're not voting the, the petition, you're voting to accept it.
Voting to, I mean.
Wow, what to go forward.
And so it, 16 signatures is all it requires?
Is it 10? I think it may be 10 signatures, yeah.
So this is all, this is all obviously gone through Lydia. They're all certified.
All the.
So just so towns. So just so people know what we're talking about, we've received a petition submitted by Sandra Walsh with 16 certified signatures to put an article on the town meeting, which would be a resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. So it's a citizen's petition that's been, like, approved or duly noted by our town clerk. So we just have to approve that.
So I'll make a motion to put this on, approve this for town meeting.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's, it doesn't look like there's anything in here we sign or anything.
No.
Okay. Okay. And then there's some personnel recommendations.
Yes, this is to hire a part-time assistant planner. This is a new position that was funded in the current planning board's operating budget. And Planning Board Chair and I interviewed two candidates for the position. Both candidates were very excellent. Credentials were excellent.
Okay.
But we are putting forth Janelle William, sorry, Janelle Franklin, to fill the position.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve this and authorize this salaried.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. Ed, that's the signature.
The next personnel form is for the new Council on Aging Program Coordinator, Laura Hummel. She replaces the previous program coordinator.
Okay, looks like she has great experience.
Yeah, she lives in town, too, by the way.
That's great. I'll make a motion to appoint Laura Hummel to the program coordinator job at the Council on Aging with this approved wage request.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is a recommendation to grant a merit increase for the executive assistant.
I happily make a motion to grant this increase based on merit.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it? Oh, did we, I thought we had the fire ones in here.
Madam Chair, we did post the 545 for the meeting with the residents.
Oh, yes, we did. So we should, we will.
Request switching topic.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, just a suggestion that maybe we might want to have Phil and Mike Oll and Mr. Gielher come up over here on the side.
Yeah, that might be a great idea.
Just to speak to the audience.
So welcome, West Street. We're glad you're all here. Can we have Michael, Phil?
Oh, Phil is here, up here.
Oh, Phil's here. Oh, so maybe, would you guys maybe sit in these chairs?
For now.
Anybody else you want up there, Marlene?
I, yeah, Ryan's here, Mike Oll, I think, and Phil, yeah, that's good. Because they'll be speaking to the project.
So you're Mr. Gielher?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for coming. I just, so, just so you know this, I don't know if everyone here has met Mr. Gielher at the end there. I think you all now, you know Mr. Oll in the center, and you all know Phil, I know that. So thank you for coming. Phil, did you want to start off by letting everybody know sort of what's going to be happening out there?
So as promised, we, before we start construction down there, we invited you all back to go over a few things, if you have any concerns of what's going to happen. So we have the contractor, we have our engineer, resident engineer here. So I guess everybody knows everybody, and we'll open it up to the concerns.
When is it starting?
Tentatively early May. The permit with MassDOT doesn't allow us to start till mid-April. So there's some things that have to fall into place for a start date at then. Just the weather is one of the biggest things that we need to make sure we don't have freezing temperatures and so.
Now, I had heard there was a problem with the piping in the road. Do you know that that's going to be able to be circumvented, and it will go forward?
That's, I could let you have the floor.
Yeah, I believe what you're referencing is there were, once the new pipe gets installed, the, there is field testing done to make sure nothing's leaking. And there were a couple of, the pipe comes in set lengths, so each length has a joint and a gasket that makes that connection. There were several of those joints that were leaking, which isn't unusual. And so there was an in-place repair done to those to essentially seal them. And there's, there was nothing wrong, excuse me, with the integrity of the pipe or anything like that. So the project is going forward. And just for reference, the section of gravity sewer that's being done this year is the piece that was in the middle, missing. So we, there was a section that was done at the northern end, essentially from Chestnut Street down to just about House Number 71, just past the USA Waste. And then there was a section on the southern end that was done, starting at the bridge, going north to just about House Number 41. So the section that's going to be done starting May is going to be that middle section. There's roughly 1,500 and 50 feet to be installed. The current schedule is, the actual pipe installation is expected to take four months.
I just have one more question. Is that okay? It was, the ground is going to be marked where the connection was going to be happening? I never noticed anything painted on my lawn or anything like that showing where the connection was going to come in. And the last meeting we had, or two meetings before, whatever, we were told that that would be nearly marked.
And you're in the section that's going to be done?
I'm at 35. I don't know.
Okay.
I thought you weren't done by us yet.
The project ended in front of her house.
Okay. So we will be redoing, redoing that process?
Your service is not in. There is an issue is why we had to stop, a subsurface issue, which caused the stop in, let's, I'm going to call it the middle section. So we didn't mark out any of those laterals, do any of that, because they had to work through some things with us. And it, it never would have got put in last year. So we start back up, yes, that we're going to have to address those.
Okay, and that was a concern that I had heard about. So that's all fine now, and it's going to go in no problem?
Yep.
Hi, John McGoughlin, representing Ms. Berry, 34th quest. What prompted me to come up is that particular issue. There was a meeting where it was said that before you put in the laterals, you would mark it with white, and we would let the contractor know whether we left the location or not. It was not done for my client's property. My understanding is that the laterals put in, in the middle of the paved parking lot, and that's not where she wanted it, because she'll have to break the parking lot, repave the parking lot, and she wanted it further north, and she had told somebody about that. I wrote to you on August 23rd of 2022, and I haven't heard back.
There was a response. I don't know if it got to you. I do not, I'm not at liberty to respond directly to you. My, I work for the town. My response goes to the town.
Okay.
I can answer your question on that particular property and that particular service.
Because Mr. Mullin.
It already?
Mr. Mullin, the attorney for the town, said it's not my problem to deal directly with you.
That service was put in, the stub already, where it ties into the sewer main, was already in place at the time of discussion at the last meeting, unbeknownst to me. So there was not, for the certain properties, there was not the opportunity to put it wherever the property owner wanted.
So is it the protocols that everybody else got where it was too late for certain properties?
Yes.
Here's a copy of my letter. If that's the response, I'll talk to my client about that. I, I would like to know, and I'm sure 32, the owner of 32, would like to know how you're going to build the facilities for the pump station. As you know, and as people here might not know, we were in a lawsuit, in a lawsuit. We were seeking to change things, and the town.
Yeah, right, it's still in a lawsuit.
It's still in a lawsuit. And in the, in the town, as part of the lawsuit, said, "Don't worry, we're going to build everything on 32." And they submitted a plan showing all the facilities were going to be built on 32, the industrial property, commercial property, not the restaurant property. And they swore to that under oath, in an affidavit, they were going to do that. They swore saying that this was in compliance with the vote of 2021. And they told the town meeting voters, in, at the last town meeting, "You don't need to vote to move it to the cemetery because we're putting everything off of the restaurant property." It's now my understanding that that's not the case, that you found some issues such that you're affidavit in the Superior Court, in your statements to all the voters.
I know. So, Mr. McGoughlin, as you know, that pending litigation. That we're not discussing tonight. This is about the construction project, the part that's starting in the spring.
Okay. Are you going to build pursuant to your plan from a month and a half ago?
At this moment in time, I am speaking about the gravity sewer section, the middle section of pipe that'll be running along West Street, from House 41 to roughly House 71. I am not talking about the pump station.
It's pending litigation, Mr. McGoughlin. You know this.
Okay.
Janice?
Are you going to be working south to north, or north to south, or here and there, and moving around?
From, from south to north. So the reason that we picked up, per se, and moved to the north was because the issue, the subsurface issue was between 35 and 71. We had that data and knew we couldn't work in that section, so we were able to continue to keep going, we were able to, which is not common practice, but to pick up and start at the north and continue to the end of the, end of the project.
All right, so your intent is just to move.
We're going to start at 35 or 32, whatever house number that is, and just off the top of my head, and continue to the north to connect, which is 71, somewhere right in 71.
Mr. Ruthier?
To Ryan. So basically, you do not follow the prints that were set before you start a Phase 1, end of Phase 1, start of Phase 2, end of Phase 2. Can you jump around on, on that project?
I can answer this.
Yeah.
I think you're referring to the way the contract drawings were titled, which was, one set of contract drawings was Phase 1, the other set was entitled Phase 2.
Correct.
Those references, the Phase 1 and Phase 2, had nothing to do with a dictated sequence of how it was supposed to be installed. It was strictly a way of packaging the work into a biddable package.
Okay. I'm sorry, you?
Go ahead.
We're going to be affected tremendously by the lift station. It's been shifted around many times. The last print I got was a proposed location. I have pictures, and it still encroaches on a narrow entrance to my business. The narrow entrance also incorporates all our utilities, which is right on the boundary line. The pole is not to be disturbed on the print, and it has been violated. And underlined, it's my power source to the building.
Mr. Ruthier.
Who would be responsible for my power?
Mr. Ruthier, that is.
Thinking I was instructed not to have it exposed.
That is outside the scope of this discussion, and it's all, that's all pertaining to pending litigation. We're not discussing it tonight.
But the lift station has to go.
I would like to hear from the residents to make sure that they're going to be.
It's the wrong location. I've already contacted DPU in Boston. There's a safety division. This is a highly congested area for gas lines, which you didn't have at alternative locations, which were safer for the public. And it encroaches on my power and the ability for me to maintain my business. And it's hinging off of this lift station. This is important to the safety of these residents. This was an error, and you're trying to patch an error here. This location is very dangerous. We have federal legislation being proposed by Ed Markey to prevent this stuff from going on. And you're asking a poor contractor to deal in the worst location on the whole street? It's dangerous. We already had a failure in a lesser area, and now you're going to encroach on our business. We, we have farm implements that come in there. We have a 24 to 26-foot opening. That's it, from the bridge to the pole. If you continue with this project, you will, you will restrict our business. We've already donated some of our time to the town. We're part of the fabric of this town, and we want representation here. This is dangerous. This would restrict our business. You've got transformers right above a vented station. You put explosive-proof panels at the lift station for a reason, but you have transformers right above it, a few feet. Now, a, a zone of influence was listed at 21 and 1/2 feet to move it up the street. Well, now you're within six feet of two major gas lines, a utility pole that's already been violating, going against. going against the prints that have been submitted. Every print and proposal, they violated it. I don't know who ordered it, but they exposed our power and you're not supposed to expose, any electrician will tell you that. You're disturbing my power. Who is liable for this when we have a failure? You're going into a dangerous zone here. And I want some answers and I want somebody to say this is okay. Put your name on this. I'm not stopping the project. I'm telling you how dangerous this is. And if you continue with the middle section and you haven't done, and you don't address the lift station at this point in time, you have no recourse but to stay on that track of this dangerous setup here. It's hazardous. And we're pursuing that hazardous part with the state and any means that we see necessary to prevent this. This is a dangerous location. Now, there was an engineer on the job that's no longer an engineer. He was supposed to look at these other locations. I know you don't want to go through the process again, but do you want to live what they're going to leave you with? I think we should be, have some representation here and correct a serious, dangerous problem before it festers. Just the installation alone, you're asking the poor contractor to do miracles. He's working within a few feet. There's zone of influences, there's no-go zones by the power company, and you're violating all of them.
Okay. Thanks. You want to respond to that at all? It's not-
Should I?
Well, I mean, it's, this is all part of the litigation.
I don't-
It's part of the litigation. We can't comment on it.
But the conversation is, like she's already pointed out-
I can't hear.
I'm sorry. Carrie?
I'm just pointing out to the gentleman that just spoke that you're under litigation and you've clearly spoken about three times in this meeting, the residents here should get to speak about what's happening with the moving forward project. The litigation can't be discussed as you've expressed three times.
Exactly.
I'm not questioning the litigation.
Well, a lot of the rest of the residents get to speak-
I'm questioning now the safety of the project.
But the point is, we are, we are, we can't discuss it because it is involving litigation. It's just how it works. Not that we're not trying to give you answers. This is how it works.
I have no litigation against the town.
Madam Chair, he's not in the litigation.
I'm not in the litigation.
The whole area he's talking about is-
I'm a concerned citizen here that pays taxes.
I understand.
And you're violating safety protocol.
Mr. Ruthier.
These engineers know all of it and they're not following it.
Thank you.
And if you continue with it-
Does anybody else have anything else they would like to speak about in the green shirt?
Dave Camp, thirty-seven West. Mr. Rowe, maybe you can explain to us what specifically the subsurface issues are that have, you know, stopped the, stopped the installation of the pipes at thirty-five and thirty-seven. Now, you keep saying the project is going to start at forty-one and move forward to seventy-one.
No, it's thirty-two. It's that area. They ended with a manhole.
Yeah, well, that's what I want because there's two houses that in between forty-one and-
Yeah, we're not skipping. No, I can assure you we're not skipping any houses.
I'd like to think that I can get rid of my septic system soon. So what are the subsurface issues there preventing the work? I mean, there was, there was an enormous problem there.
It was.
We know that. And no one ever explained to us what that problem was.
Sure. So the soils generally in the area are like a salty sand. Very fine-grained. What, in the sewer excavation, in the area at the southern end, so in front of your house, it's down around twenty feet, give or take. And what was encountered at the lower levels of the excavation was layers of clay. So the, which you take, we did borings every hundred feet during the design to, you know, be able to educate the contractors, the bidders, get realistic expectations as to what the conditions were. It did not show that extent of clay.
Kind of jumped over it? Is that-
Yeah, which is-
Is it a small section or?
It, it's, when you encounter it, it's in big pockets. So what it affects is the ability of the contractor's original dewatering system, which was the larger diameter wells spaced out to be able to de-water a localized area, to be able to construct and excavate without having the bottom surface of the trench start to just get soft. And I don't know if you've ever experienced, but it'll, you can step on it. It's almost like a little bit of a trampoline.
Yeah.
So it's not, they were struggling with that when they encountered it, did the best they could in that area, but that was a primary reason for the slow progress, was trying to deal with those conditions.
And you've got a solution for that now?
Yes. So that's what's been happening behind the scenes is the, we've been going back and forth and the contractors proposed a different dewatering system, essentially picture a two-hundred-foot section. Within that two-hundred-foot section will be much smaller diameter well points spaced five feet on center. So they will be able to, what was the problem?
You're saying five feet on center?
Yes.
Every five feet given how well?
Small diameter.
Yeah.
Because what happens is you can't pull the water through this clay material fast enough to de-water your work area.
So they're going to be running sections of, I don't know, Mr. Giller, how, how much do you excavate?
About, well, we're gonna-
Each day, about fifteen, twenty feet, thirty feet?
Well, that was due to what we started encountering. It slowed the process down. But we're going to set up a section of dewatering of around two-hundred feet and then, you know, work through that. And exactly what the production rate's going to be, I don't know. But what we're kind of hoping for is a week and a half to get through that two-hundred feet. But then we need to pick up, we've got to do the main line, then we've got to deal with the laterals because some of them are deep. And then we've got to pick up that two-hundred feet and for lack of better words, like flip-flop it for another two-hundred and just keep going down the road with that system.
Can I piggyback on that since it's my property too?
Yeah.
I just want to know, like, I know that you have the problem and we have hoses across our driveway that were gradually getting bigger. And I know you're saying that, you know, we're going to attempt this or we're going to try it and we think it's going to work. But the thing is, if it doesn't work or if you have to, to change your plan, will you keep us directly involved? And, and, you know, informed of what you're going to do and how it's going to change? Because we are not being kept dug.
And then the intent on this is because the system has changed, we're going to end up trenching through the driveway, so-
Could you speak up a little?
We'll be trenching through the driveway with the, with the discharge hoses, depending on which direction it's going. But you're not going to, before you could have the lay flat like a fire hose you could drive over, it wasn't an issue. This is going to be different.
It was an issue.
Different piping and materials, but it's going to be, it's, there's going to be a shallow trench through the driveway or a part of the yard where that pipe's going to be installed. So you might have gravel, but it'll be, it'll be flat.
The only, I, I'm asking because we had sinkholes and you already know that. We had other problems. And I really, really don't want one foot of our driveway or, like, our cars had a lot of suffering going, you know, not just over the gravel, the stuff blowing up, but those hoses were getting gradually bigger and they weren't flat by any means. We were like, our cars were going over little mountains. And I just want you to consider that this is really more than just like, we're going to try it. We just want to know what's next. If you encounter a problem or a delay or an issue where you're going to have to change horses in midstream, would you please tap us? And not just come out someday and have a new excavator and do something different without even knocking on our door or leaving a note for us to tell us what you're going to do? Because that's happened. I mean, I have come out and seen mountains of sand in my driveway.
That's what the resident engineer that's on site is, is to, to handle that.
Let us suggest we could provide the town with a weekly update of the work ahead.
But the residents, I mean, if something happens like today, let us know so that we know what's going to be happening tomorrow because a change has to be afoot. Like I said, I was driving out one day and I, there was like five feet of, of bird or something at the end of my driveway. And I had to go out and ask somebody, they had to dig it up so I could go to an appointment because I had no idea it was going to be there.
Right.
You know, I mean, that's really kind of major.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would agree with you that I would like to see, you know, better communication out there for the, for the time. Those kinds of things shouldn't happen. So I, I would hope that this next phase of the project will not be as difficult on all of you as parts of the last year were. We understand. I know that.
I know, but, you know, like I said, I know you understand and I am not belittling that, but living in it has been absolutely-
I know.
And, and I want to also just ask if anyone is ever going to fix our front yard when this is done. I, I keep being told different things about where easement is way back. But then when the, the public works came through for the state, they were trimming trees and they said, oh, we're not going to trim yours because it's, you know, it's your property, which was way closer to the road than the town, than I hear from the town. So I'm like, okay, so what is our actual easement? And, and does it change from year to year? I mean, I'm seriously, I don't know.
No, the easements all change in the property. Everyone's property is a little bit different then.
Yeah, no, I, but I mean, they were directly on my property telling me this tree is, is your property. And then the town comes through and says, no, you've got several feet back that, you know, we don't have to count for.
Right. And as we showed you last time with pictures, there was heavy equipment on our lawn that would be on the easement.
Yeah.
On and on, except for winter.
And I would, anything that was disturbed by the project, whether it was within the right-of-way or on, outside of the easement, it's not, it's the right-of-way, will be taken care of.
Okay.
So even the driveways, like if you're digging the driveways, they'll be repaved?
Yeah.
So wasn't there a rental fee that was involved though if you were on people's property? Wasn't there supposed to be a rental fee if you were day after day and week after week? Because we had no visibility backing out of our driveways and barrels and I almost got hit with, by a motorcyclist one day. I mean, I would have thought that you could have pulled in further. I, I understood that you couldn't just sit on somebody's lawn without making some sort of a, of an arrangement with people whose lawn you've- Is that-
I, I never encountered that during a project of this magnitude.
Going forward, there should not be anything on private property.
Okay, just that last thought, yeah.
No, but I, I think when I, after I said that, it was, we were already in the midst of it. There was already stuff that was on.
Okay, because I heard that it was too time-consuming to have to move everything back to the staging area. So that's why it was being left there.
And that was-
Well, I mean, as we work, we do take some shoulder of the road and where the easement is because where, where we're putting the sewer is within the easement. So could it possibly encroach, you know, I'd have to look at every easement, every property line. But I know like on some of the properties, when we put the lateral in, you know, we do encroach because the lateral comes right to the easement line, we do encroach onto the private property to install that because of the way that process happens. I, I can look at it. It's just, it's, it's difficult to have to bring the machines down or there's certain areas, I know there's, it's next to impossible to be able to leave some, some machines because of trees and such, but I'll look at that.
I mean, I guess I, I would agree with them that the least amount of equipment that just gets left out would be better. You know, I drive down there twice a day and I know that there was equipment on property for a long time. And I can imagine that would not be great. So the most, as, as, the minimal amount necessary of anything left on anyone's lawn would be ideal.
And also what hour do you start in the morning?
Uh, seven to three-thirty.
What?
Seven to three-thirty.
Oh, I thought you said start at three-thirty.
No, seven.
Yeah, no, because I, sometimes equipment has shown up earlier than that. So I just, yeah, okay. Thank you.
I just have a question. When you put the lateral in, when are we going to actually hook to the, to the pipe? Does that happen this year or is that pending the lift station and the pump station and all that?
It is pending the lift station. The hope is that it would be ready to, you start it up and operational by the end of this year.
Okay. And the process for hooking, is that part of the contract, we have to, I understand, we have to decommission our septic systems, but then the actual hooking to the lateral would be on us or would on the town?
If the town project includes laterals up to the property line-
Gotcha.
And then from there, it would be up to the individual property owner.
Okay, okay.
So that's a good question because I'm sure you're all going to want to try to coordinate.
Right.
And it's not like contractors are just readily available to show up. So that's something that we need to stay in touch with residents on in terms of what we're looking at for possible timeframes of when they might actually be able to do that so that they can schedule work before another winter.
Right. I mean, it's a budgetary thing as well.
Well, it's, yes, of course, because it isn't cheap. It isn't cheap. But it's probably also pretty hard to get a contractor, although I would assume that if you could get somebody who was going to do multiple ones, it might be a little easier. Mr. Ruthier, does this have to do with the project that we're talking about? Okay.
If you were the planning board, okay, new businesses up the street that have the ability to hook to this system, is this system adequate for the increased load, including the lift station? Since the lift station's been downsized to try to squeeze it into a narrow footprint, which it wasn't intended for, is this system as a total capable of expansion?
Yes.
The tank will cycle more often and require more maintenance. They're only good for twenty years.
Yeah, the original tank was twenty by seven by twenty feet deep. Now it's eight by eight, the wet well.
So it's inadequate for any expansion or is it adequate?
The wet well has not been downsized. The pump station, as it was bid, is the pump station-
That's not true. As we have the prints, we've been following. You've downsized it to squeeze it into a narrower spot.
I would disagree.
And you're putting it on top of our inquiries.
Yeah, we're not, again, we're not talking about that. We're talking about the-
We are attached there.
I understand, but we also have an agenda and a, and a scope of what we can talk about in regards to that agenda. You've clearly said what you need to say tonight. We all heard you. That's part of pending litigation.
I have to start a suit, is what you're saying?
I'm not saying you have to start a suit. I'm telling you that, that is, none of that can be discussed as part of this meeting because of the pending litigation, period.
This fabric of this-
I understand, Mr. Ruthier. I'm going to ask you to stop.
You can.
Yes?
Jeff Barthlett, fifty-three West Street, two questions. There is a surface sewer somewhere in the middle of my lawn off the road. That's kind of been buried, been exposed. I was wondering if that is going to stay or be removed or be updated or, it's weird. It's sunk off the road.
It covered right over the top of that.
It's been covered over before.
Some lines have been flowing up in water.
Been exposed as well. It's, it's like a surface sewer from the state.
What address is it?
Fifty-three West.
Okay.
We're right on the corner of where the road, where the equipment is being stored in the back. That's one, one question. The other question is, we have a concrete driveway that I put in about, knowing this has been going on three years, about four or five years ago, something like that. If they're to tear that up, as long, that is to be replaced with concrete, not blacktop, correct?
Inconceivable.
Okay, very good. That was my concern.
It's a good question.
Yeah, but the surface question, the, the surface sewer, I'm just-
Is that to the left or to the right of the driveway?
From my driveway is to the left of my driveway.
It's right there.
Just to the right where you went to the-
It's got covered right over.
Yeah, it's strange. I've never figured out what I'm supposed to do.
I have to put it to the line.
Because there's a catch basin further down that was collapsed and I told the guy from DOT about it.
It's sort of sunken down too. The other concern I had was, you know, some of the heavy equipment is parked in that area. I just want to know that they know that's there. That's always nice.
Did you have-
Kay Marsh, I'm at forty-five West Street. I think my house is probably the closest, in fact, I know it is, the closest house to the road. And I have a line of bushes out in the front of my house for obvious reasons. I'm concerned about the viability of those bushes and I just want to make sure that somebody's going to talk to me first if there's going to be an issue so that I don't wake up some morning and next thing I know, I have to push this button.
Okay. I'll make a note to specifically look at those in ahead of construction.
Yeah, I would appreciate it.
And if anything happened to them, we would replace them, no?
Yes.
Yes. If anything were to happen to them, we would replace them.
But I'm envisioning this is a mature-
That's the light blue house, right?
Yeah, it'd be preferable to preserve it.
Yeah. That's the light blue house, right?
Right.
Yes, okay.
It's usually homestead.
Yep, yep. Any, Janice?
57 West Street. If the project starts in May and takes four months, so it would be September, end of August, September, when the whole staging area would go away and have to be put back to the way it was?
Once we're finished with paving.
Which is going to be this year?
Which will be this year, which, we're trying to finish the piping work and give the mainline trench like 30 to 45 days before any final paving.
All the dirt will be gone, all the equipment will be gone, the standing water will be covered up and all.
So if...
Finished the paving? How much are you paving? How much of the road are you paving?
I have to go from 35, 32 to 71.
Yeah, the spot that we're now going to be disturbing.
Not the whole of the road.
The final paving.
Correct. Just the one lane that will be in.
So just for, is there, it would be, I know if I was out there, I think it would be nice if there was a single contact that I could call if I had a concern or a question with a, with an understanding that I would get a call back within a day or so. Is that something we can do, Phil? So who, who's going to take the call?
The resident engineer will be out there.
Yeah, for the moment, it can be me.
Okay.
And it was last year and I did get a few calls from several people and I did respond.
Okay. Does everyone know how to reach Mr. Oll if they need to?
I guess you could go through the phone number again.
Right.
Hasn't changed.
I know, I'm asking my husband, because I, yeah, I'm a retreats or...
So if there's any questions about the project as work progresses, you can call me at 774-573-8973.
You don't have the clerk of the works up there anymore?
We will. We're still, this whole thing's kind of been in limbo as we work through some of the details and so I don't know exactly who that individual will be. But I will, once we do know that, I'll let the town know so that we can even pass out a flyer through the residents as we get closer.
Could I just also ask, is there going to be represented, I always ask this of the gas company? Every day and circulating, because that comes and goes.
We have been coordinating with the gas company. As was noted, there are, you know, significant concerns about the gas. The gas company does not have any specific concerns at this moment in time with any of the work that's being proposed. The approach they were taking after last year's incident, or the year before, I should say, we would, they would go ahead and mark out just enough ahead of what the contractor was expecting to excavate. And they're being very attentive, understandably, to their markings now.
Anybody else?
I'm, excuse me, I just have a thing or something. Is there a time limit to hooking up to the sewer?
I...
For the town?
No.
Okay.
For the, for a resident to tie in?
Right.
No.
No limit.
And it's, you know, it's optional.
I'm sorry, and then it touched that last...
It's optional.
Optional.
Right.
Okay.
But the only thing is, if your septic fails, you'll be required to tie in. You can't put another septic system in if there's an active sewer, a public sewer in
Quick question. So if the system, so if the private system fails, before you get a pump station in, which may not be in the end of your litigation, it may be into, you know, 2024, now you have the opportunity to put your own system in?
Correct. Correct. Only if the, if the sewer is online.
That makes sense.
The other question, the other question I noticed, huh? Do you know how much it will cost? How much does it cost for the water and sewer currently?
No, we don't, we don't have the numbers. Every contractor is different, so.
What do you mean to...
You mean like what their sewer bill will be?
Water and sewer rate.
What the rates are? I mean...
What the town is paying now, all townspeople that are...
Well, it's all different. It's based on consumption.
Yeah, it's consumption.
Yeah. So what's the rate?
The estimated for us, was that, wait, comparatively, we got a bill and it was 100% more than we're paying now?
The sewer is double the water.
Yeah, the sewer is, right. Isn't that what it is? The sewer is about double the water?
It's about double the water.
Can you explain this water and sewer rates to them so that they're, that's what they're asking?
Yeah, the sewer rate is higher than the water rate. I don't have the numbers in front of me for the water and sewer rates that are currently in place. It's based on 100 cubic feet of usage. So say, we'll just say, I think the sewer is 575 or something like that. Or water's 575, so every 100 cubic feet of water, which is about 780 gallons of water, is billed at $5.75.
And then your sewer bill is based on your water usage?
Yeah.
Rates are going up again July 1st if I'm wrong?
I think this current bill that's going out now...
They have a two-year increase, so yes.
Bill, the current bill, that, the water and sewer bills that will be going out April 1st?
Yes.
Correct, those have the new rates?
Yes. And then I think the following year, there's another rate increase.
There is. As somebody who doesn't have sewer, I can tell you, I would happily pay that bill. Yes, Carrie?
As somebody who does have sewer, since I live down here, I can tell you, we get a bill twice a year, once in the spring, obviously, and once in the fall. And it definitely, the different times of year, obviously, are much different bill-wise, because it also depends on if you choose to water your lawn or not when we're not going to grow.
Right.
I would 100% advise you that if you want, if you water your lawn currently, because you have a well or whatever and you connect, I wouldn't be using town water to be doing that, because your water rate, your bill's going to go high. But I pay on average and it really, I mean, even with the increases we've had, I have a family of four, a 2,500 square foot home, and we pay about $450 twice a year, give or take. I have an extra child in the home now, so it's going to probably be a little bit more than it was last year, knowing that there's an extra body in the house, but that was based on three people living in the house as of last year. So that just gives you all a general idea of what a family of three to four could possibly be. And we don't water our lawn. I wish we could, but we can't. I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to give them that general knowledge.
No, that's okay. I don't get it.
The sewer bill, so I...
Right.
Anything else? We have a, we have a meeting with our finance committee in a couple of minutes, but I do have time if anyone has some other question or anything. I, I appreciate all of you coming in and I appreciate your ongoing patience with this project.
Thank you for at least having, for having this meeting and scheduling it. We really appreciate that. That really helps a lot.
We are back. Can we, I'll make a motion that we approve sending this letter regarding use of compression brakes in town. Are you okay with that?
Well, I'll second that, but I do want to point out that this will go to the companies, but for independent drivers, they don't work for these companies, so unless we look at signage or adding another sign for independent drivers, I don't see how this will affect them, that's all. But I will, I will second the motion with the intent that we still look at signage to see if there's anything that we can do to give them pre-warning before they get to that corner.
Yeah, but this is a start at least. And it's just asking for them to consider using them only in cases of emergency. So, any further discussion?
No.
Do we make a motion in a second? Yes. Yes.
You made the motion and seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Can you legally tell trucks that they can't use Jake brakes?
Well, we're not, as far as this letter goes...
It's just a general question.
I had the same question. I was like, it's a piece of safety equipment.
The answer, as far as this letter from our lawyer says, there's nothing legally objectable in the select board's draft letter to Hatfield business owners urging them to instruct their drivers to avoid the needless use of compression brakes, so we're not...
Except in emergency, you know, only for emergencies.
And generally, because we see a lot of trucks on our, generally, the local businesses in town, I think have been, are pretty good.
I would think so, too.
I think we see the Wickles trucks go by all the time and years ago, yes, did they use it, but they don't have a tendency to use the Jake brake, which is very nice. And our bedroom is literally 20 feet from the road, so...
Well, and that's kind of Ed's point, that we don't think it's really local businesses, so...
Right.
You know, but we'll, we'll put that out there anyway, as a starting point. So quickly, you wanted to take up the lease agreement for the COA van?
Well, it's for the lease agreement in general. So we took delivery of the COA van and by the contract that is drafted with the lease company is at delivery, you pay, you pay the initial payment. And it was just a timing issue of when things arrived. And today, the fire department received their pickup, so there's another payment due on May 11th for the $50,500. I discussed it with the finance committee, I discussed it with some of the board members. So I think that, you know, that this payment has to be made by May 11th. And right now, there's $500 balance in the lease agreement.
Essentially require two payments in one year. Because you got delivery in the same...
Because we got delivery. And this covers both the pickup and the COA van.
You make that first payment when you get one of the three vehicles.
Anything is delivered.
Right, and it happened just because the timing came before July.
Can we use ARPA funds for this?
Sure, you can use ARPA. That's my understanding.
Because we don't have that kind of money in finance reserve.
I was under the impression that we can use the funds for a lot of different things.
Yeah, I thought they were restricted.
Revenue loss, right? You can pretty much use it for pretty much anything, except for...
Do you know...
I know there's a few things you can't.
Do we know what the balance, our ARPA fund balance is?
I have that with me. Do I have that here?
Half a million?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how we're supposed to get a second payment and we haven't touched that yet.
We received all the money. I was pretty sure I had that with me, but I don't. I don't have it with me.
That's okay. We're pretty sure we have 50...
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I thought I did. So we have 524,137 available.
525, I'm sorry, 525?
Seems to me that's the easiest way, because otherwise, we have to have a special article at town meeting to pay it, or we're delinquent on paying and wait till the end of the year and do it in terms of transfers, end of the year transfers, which...
If you want to be delinquent, you can help it probably, right? Yeah. You don't want to be delinquent.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a penalty, I assume, for that.
Some kind of the interest and everything.
Do you, do we have, well, there's a whole lease fund, so if the money's not there, the money's not there. And we can't...
Because we made the initial payment out of that lease fund.
And legally, you can't take money from, say, Highway and move it to...
And then this is different because of what? Like this extra amount?
The extra amount, because there's a payment due May 11th, an annual payment.
Yeah. I stand corrected. We didn't budget for or expect, I mean, that's...
We didn't know, because the delivery, we didn't think, we thought the delivery would be later.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Thought the delivery would be after July 1st of this year.
Yes.
So we...
You know, I mean, every time we talked to them, you know, they kept saying that, you know, things were so delayed waiting.
Right. Okay. I'd just like to correct that number I gave you. I was looking at the wrong number. What's available is 479,896.
I'm looking for 55...
35,500.
Well, you said you had some money already in, what do you...
There's $500 left in the balance of the lease. We can use that, so I'm looking for 50,000.
Okay. All right, there we go. But it's, my understanding with ARPA funds, it's just the board of selectmen votes on that. We don't, we don't even have the finance, we don't have to vote on it, isn't that correct, Marlene?
That's correct.
I just shared that with you, just in case there, we couldn't use the ARPA funds and we have to find a way out.
Yeah.
Well, do you want to take a vote tonight?
I don't have a problem taking a vote. I mean, it's got to get paid, so it's deciding which funding source to use and we do have money available under ARPA and it's, the situation came in, they weren't expected to get into July, so easiest, quickest way is probably ARPA funding.
All right, I'll make a motion that we use $50,000 in ARPA funding to pay the lease payment that's due May 11th.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So I just have a question for Marlene before you go. So should I notify Laura?
Actually, I'll complete the form tomorrow. The board will have to sign it, but I'll let her know the board voted that...
Okay, I just want to make sure that the invoice is in the, is in the ream before the due date.
So when you ask notify Laura, you're talking about, notify her of the board?
Of the account number and all that, so we can pay it. The ARPA fund account.
Yeah, I'll let her know that.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll need to sign that this week? Well, as soon as possible. Okay. It's on record that you voted, but just... Yeah, okay. Well, let me know when it's ready. It's just hard, it's hard for me to get down. The accountant won't need that for...
That's sending.
Yes. So you can see how many...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go in with the finance committee here.
You don't have to go through it too many times to start to go up.
Yeah.
Cold in here tonight.
Do you want me to turn the heat up?
No.
Oh, gosh, no. Please.
Oh, no.
Thank you, no.
Plenty warm, plenty warm in here.
Yeah, right.
Surprisingly, Karen, I'm comfortable. I know. That's a shocker. I know, you were just complaining about being cold. All right, well, finance committee, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
To the next installment of budget discussions. The fire department mini pumper loan, extending the term of the loan. Marlene, can you?
Yes. So this is one of the items on our debt schedule, which is included in the budget, and the treasurer collector consulted with, with bond counsel to see if we could reduce the payment, if we extended the lease from five to 10 years. And it seemed that it would be in, in the town's best interest to extend the 10 years, extend it from seven to 10 years. Did I say lease? Loan.
It's a loan, right?
It is a loan.
And we just need to take a vote to do that? Do you guys have any?
Yes, so you have that motion there.
Yeah. You guys want to discuss this at all? Do you have any concerns?
Subject's interest rate is at?
Let's see, I think I updated those numbers.
Who's bringing this forward? Is this-
The treasurer.
The treasurer is bringing it. Okay, thank you. Sorry. And, and is this an effort just to reduce the principal that we have to pay, or what's her reasoning for this?
Well, this is, this is a debt that we're picking up this year. And so I do not have the, it'll, it'll reduce the, the principal. Currently, on the schedule that she submitted for a five-year lease, the principal due would be $70,000. The interest would be $15,750. Oh, so I have actually reduced that. So you can see that up on the screen. Fire, fire mini pumper.
Yeah.
So it reduces the, the principal from $70,000 to $35,000.
But it extends the term out?
Correct, from five to seven years.
I'm just curious, why she picked that one?
Well, I mean, $70,000 is pretty high. I mean, we can keep it at five years, but the, the principal's going to be higher.
It's okay with me.
Is, maybe she picked that one because it's brand new, right? It's new. It's not-
Right. This is brand new.
It's brand, it's a brand new.
Is the mini-
We're just adding that this year.
The mini pumper, is this, I don't know what this is. Is this like a little pickup? Is it a 350, a 450?
Oh, I don't.
It's the, right, that's right. It's the North Hatfield.
Thank you, Karen.
That's what the mini pumper is.
So the mini pumper really is a full-fledged fire truck?
Correct.
So 10 years, I'm way okay?
Yeah, it's definitely gonna-
That's what I needed to know.
I think the existing one's like 30 years old, right?
What?
The existing one's like 30 years, something years old, or whatever.
Easy.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, that's, that's why I, I'm sorry.
So I wonder if the decision, her recommendation is based on it, first of all, being a brand-new loan, and the maximum useful life is much longer than-
Right. Yeah.
The original term of the loan.
I'm okay.
Okay, so is everybody okay if I make this motion? So I need to actually read this, Marlene?
Yes, please.
Am I clerk of the select board?
Oh, that was a question I had asked if the chair could sign it, because we don't have a clerk on the-
All right, so I, Chair of the Select Board of the Town of Hatfield, Massachusetts, certify that a meeting, is this, no, this is just a certification. It's not a motion. So do we just, we just make a motion and then I sign this? Okay, I thought that was a motion. So I will make a motion that we-
Right here. This is the motion right here, that the maximum useful life.
Okay. I make a motion that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below the fire department mini pumper, to be financed with the proceeds of $350,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed May 10th, 2022, Article 27, is hereby determined pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 71, to be as follows, fire department mini pumper borrowing amount, $350,000, maximum useful life, 10 years. And do I have to, I'll, this is-
Second?
Oh.
Yes, I'll second. Does she have to read the second part?
I don't have to read the-
No. She's just going to date it and sign it.
Okay.
All right.
A motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
Let's get to the budget.
Okay. Marlene, are you-
Okay, where do we want to start?
Oh, boy.
So why don't, why don't we start with what we talked about last week? Diana? Why don't we start and tell them what we talked about last week?
Last week, we weren't here last two weeks ago.
Two weeks.
So remind me.
I can start.
Yeah.
So, so we had a meeting weeks ago, last week. It was just the finance committee. And we, we had a long, we discussed some of the different, different budgets, different requests. And so as a starting point, the, as I understand it, the, a level-funded budget, not level services, level-funded budget, is, is pretty low. It's, 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 it's down there. So what we came up with was money for the school, roughly $700,000, their request. Money for, the police had requested 200,000. We suggest 100,000. The fire depart, or fire ambulance, since there's an ongoing study that we're working on, we suggest that we do that again out of free cash this year until we have an answer going forward. There are some other things that need, that, that are, that are part of that. Sean, you got to help me. School-
No. Yeah, I mean, you know, we don't have very much money to work with. In fact, it's really almost nothing. If you, you know, you've lost fairly, we've lost us revenue, like, we've lost net state aid overall, mostly because your sending tuition for charter is up, you know, when you're sending tuition for charter choice is what, 160,000? Is that what it looks like on the budget, Marlene?
Yep.
You go to the, so you're, so you lost 160,000 there. Your chap, your two and a half is only what, 200-ish, maybe a little more than 200, plus your new growth is 275. So you get 275 in new revenue. You already lost 165 of it before you even got out the door. You also, even though it's offset, you also lost 200,000 in aid in Chapter 70. So, you know, that's in, in receiving tuition. So you can see, right, under receiving tuition, you went from 906 to 688. You know, and then on the, on the other side, on the sending side, you lost, school choice sending tuition is up, nope. Wait a minute, I'm trying to see. Do you have a different number than I, that's, is that the same? Did we change the number, Marlene?
I have-
Oh, it went up from 20, from 2000, it went way up from 2022.
It's the far right-hand column, 24.
So you lost, you know, you're losing money, you're losing money there by a considerable amount. And I, you know, I don't know what the cause of that is. I don't know if it's increases or what's happening, but, so the revenue picture is not, is not great, you know. Is that, is the 23 number an actual number, Marlene?
Yes.
At this point? Okay. And so we're projecting the same thing for 24 to happen?
Roughly, roughly, yeah.
That's what we think is going to happen, yeah. So, you know, I don't know, you're, there's just not a ton of money when you figure in just increases to things that we have very little control over, so.
No control over. Health insurance.
Yeah, health insurance, fuel, like, I mean, all the DPW increases are basically all, there's nothing new there. It's really the same things, just more expensive. Your fuel, heating costs for building maintenance, you know, all those lines are up, and not dramatically, but enough. When you're only bringing in a couple hundred thousand dollars in new revenue a year, it doesn't take very long.
And, and by, you know, so that comes to, so for an override?
Well, that's what's going, I was going to ask what the bottom line was, where you were.
We're looking at at least a million dollars, at least. I'm not, I'm not sure a million covers everything, but-
And on the police, so he had put 200 in because of this?
Yep.
And you said 100. What were you suggesting he not?
We're just trying to figure out how to, how to fit it in. I mean, how, how much do we?
And the school, the number they asked for is the number you gave?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because, because the dynamic that's happening is you're losing revenue. So the question is really not, do you want to fund more money to the school? The question is, do you want to do it now, or do you want to do it later? Because the more revenue you lose, you're going to have to plug that hole somehow. There's no other way to plug the hole except to spend more money. The difference is, if you spend money now, you might retain or increase the number of school choice students and bring in more revenue. If you wait and you cut the budget, and you lay off teachers, and you increase class sizes, or you don't add any programming, and people leave, then you're going to have to spend money next year. Only what you're going to be spending it on is a lesser product, you know, that is now going downhill every year, because you don't, you're just plugging the holes that you're creating by losing revenue. So, you know, you can't really withstand that kind of revenue loss over time. And the only way to do it is to, I mean, the only logical way that I see now is to invest money in it and to actually increase some programming, you know, like something. It doesn't have to be everything, but small class sizes alone are not drawing in enough people. You know, like, that's not bringing in enough revenue. And the extra tricky part of this is, it's not just retain the people you have, because the people you have are leaving anyway, because they only stay four, or five, six years, the absolute most, right? So you have to have new people coming in to replace them. You know, you have to actually be attracting new people. And if you look over time, the problem really at the heart of it is, you've lost students, I'm assuming because of demographics, because they're mostly, the most of the loss is your own Hatfield students. You just don't have them anymore. And I'm assuming that's because of an aging population. I don't really know why, but that's my guess, is that it's an aging population, lack of affordable housing for families, you know, probably a whole myriad of things go into it, right? But, but that's the reality. You know, if you go back to, I went back to like '08, you know, you've probably lost, I want to say 100 students since then. Not choice, just your own students. You know, so you're, you're kind of in a, you really are in a situation where, and you don't have any options. There is no other option. That no one is, no one hasn't been knocking at the door to say, hey, we'd like to, you know. And I'm still not, and I'm also not 100% convinced how much money you can actually save, to be truthful. If you look at per pupil expenditures, and I don't have this years, but I've looked in the past, if you look at per pupil expenditures, the towns, unless there's something hidden in there, the towns that have elementary-only districts, and, I mean, that's really kind of what you would be talking about, spend dramatically more than we do. So, per student. So is there a way to save money? I don't even know the answer to that question. I don't even know if there is a way, really, to save significant sums of money, because you still have to educate the people you have. So it's really a, it's a tricky situation, but I feel like if you don't make an investment now, and bring in more choice people, bring in people to replace the people who are graduating, and, you know, I don't know what those numbers look like through the grade levels, like, to, to project how many people are going to leave this year, next year, whatever, through natural attrition. But if you don't, if you don't do that, you're going to lose more revenue, and then you're going to have to fix that problem. And how do you do that?
It's a bit of a slippery slope. And I feel like we're at, as a community, at a crossroads with a number of departments. And I would, obviously, the school, even police, right? Things have changed. Fire and ambulance, there's been, things have changed, and we need to decide how we want to invest in them. And, you know, I think our job, sitting at these two tables, is to put forward, you know, what, what we think is best for townspeople, or what their options are, and then they have to decide how they want to invest in the community.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think the only difference is that, all the things are certainly worthy of investment. The only difference I see is that essentially, essentially, you're operating the school as if it were a business enterprise of the town. That's what you're doing. Like, you're not doing that with the police department. You might somewhat be doing it, I mean, there's some potential, I guess, to do it with ambulance, but I don't know that it's a money-making proposition, but there is some-
Well, there's an offset.
There's offsets, right. But the school, you're, you're essentially running it like a, like a home business for the town. And you have to attract more customers. You just don't have enough customers. And I think, I don't know, you know, I don't know what the other answers could be, but you're getting dangerously close to putting yourself in a place where you just simply don't have enough people to run it anymore at a reasonable level. Although I will say, you know, based on per pupil expenditures, it's pretty inexpensive. And that's why I wonder, like, how much money you could actually save by going, you know, by regionalizing, if you had a partner, like, which you don't have. So let me just say that. You don't have one.
Obvious partner for that.
And, you know, and then the question is, how much money could you really save? I mean, you're still going to need to have, I mean, you barely have any administration, really. You know, like, you barely have any administration at the school. So are you going to save, you know, I don't know. I don't know how much you can really save. It's, it's not as much as I think people might think, just based on, all the regional schools around us spend more per pupil than we do.
The other thing we talked about at the meeting that I'm remembering is, didn't we talk about $60,000 for COLA increases?
Oh, we did talk about COLA, yeah.
And-
And health insurance.
And we did talk about bumping up the possibility of bumping up health insurance from, I can't remember, we're at 55? Did we talk about going up to 65 for, for health insurance?
I mean, yeah.
Right? I mean-
Well, and that sort of falls into the same discussion, the same, my same point about being at a crossroads, right? Because we have, we struggle with employee retention and attracting employees. And we're not paying the same as other communities. And
Well, we don't, and we don't offer the same-
Again, it gets back to investing in your community.
I mean, we offer a good health insurance plan that is very similar to other communities, but we don't pay the same percentage as other, as many other communities do. I mean, we're 5% over the minimum, so, you know, like-
I mean, basically, we either put the school on life support or pay for the operation. I mean, that's basically what we're saying, right?
Yeah, and I think the other things are, you know, are absolutely true. You're, you know, you're, it's one thing to not be the most competitive employer when unemployment's at 6%, 7%. Unemployment is the lowest it's been since I've been alive. Like, you're not going to attract, who are you attracting? You know, like, there's, there's all kinds of people hiring for these kinds of, for public safety jobs particularly. So who are you?
And, and in the DPW, some of the positions there, like at the wastewater plant and stuff like that, we, we've got to be competitive, because we can't.
Right.
There's, there's no, you know, so, I mean-
Yeah, it's a limited field of people that have the license and are going to go to work there, you know, like, this is not-
Right. If they can go and be paid more in another local community and pay less in health insurance, it's-
Yeah, I, I talked to somebody a couple weeks ago who worked for the town and does not work for the town anymore, who basically told me that they loved working here, everything about it. The reason they left is because it wasn't worth it to work, even though they were paid less than other places, it was the health insurance. You know, it wasn't worth it to work extra shifts and everything, so you could pay the difference in the health insurance.
I get that. So, so the question is, I don't think what we've drilled down to is what the actual number is, whether it's a million or more than that. That's, that's the next number that we would need to drill down on. Um, and that's, that's a big number and, and we did have a discussion and I am concerned about taxpayers being willing to foot that bill because, you know, I, I looked at it on my own personal, like, wow, this is a big increase. And, and, and so I, you know, townspeople are gonna have to carefully consider that.
But it looks like the alternative essentially is, I'm gonna use this term loosely, but it's a level funded budget basically is the alternative. Because you're talking about, you know, it'll be the un, it'll, we'll just have to fund the uncontrollable things, the health insurance, the fuel costs. Those things will have to get funded and that will really be the money. Like, that's it.
That may not even, the mon, the, the extra may not even cover that. So you're maybe talking about cuts.
Me, yeah.
The school wanted four hundred thousand to be level service, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, you're definitely talking about cuts, yeah.
That, that cuts the school four hundred thousand. That, the police who wants, wanted two hundred thousand. That, that levels the police, that brings the fire ambulance budget back to, um, two years ago.
Yeah, if we're gonna, yeah, I would suggest that.
Cause if we're gonna go level.
Right, there's no reason to, there's no reason, if we're going level, there's no real reason to, to use free cash in that way. You know what I mean? Cause that, like, what are we delaying? Eventually, you're gonna have to go back to where you were two years ago because the salary's essentially doubled in the last two years. You're not really gonna be able to sustain that.
Right.
Well, I mean, I, I just, I, I guess I feel like, um, you know, townspeople, we, we, if, if that's the, if we're gonna ask for an override, we have to let them know exactly what they're getting. You know, it'd be nice to have projections maybe of average tax bills so people have an understanding of, you know, what it might cost. And so this is what it might cost you. These are, this is what you get and this is what you lose.
Give the calculator out, you can easily.
I mean, I, I just think it's just a matter of, um, you know, letting them know and, I, I mean, I know a lot of people watch these meetings and they've watched these discussions around these different departments. Um, but.
Yeah, I think.
Not everybody.
I think though that we, you know, like, for us in the room, we just have to decide what we want to put forward now. You know, like, there's no reason really to wait. There's not gonna be any giant influx of money. I, I mean, I mean, hopefully there will be, but I, I don't see a giant influx of money coming our way.
I guess my feeling is you, it, it, we, to be doing our job, we have to give townspeople the option to invest in the community in a way that, um, you know, covers these departments to the level of services they've become accustomed to or making some further investments so that we're, you know, addressing the, the concerns at the school department or in the police department.
And, you know, there's a macro question here in a way, which is like, you know, we've been running, inflation has been below two percent for many years, you know, like realistically. You know, and so two and a half percent, uh, works. But when it's six to nine percent, two and a half percent isn't, isn't gonna cut that.
Well, and I've always said that, that, you know, two and a half, it catches up with you eventually. And they, and you need to push the reset button every once in a while.
Yeah, you're, yep. You're right.
You know, you can live within the confines of, of proposition two and a half and you can do all these creative things and everything that we've done, but then at some point, you've got to make some decisions. Okay.
Marlene, you've been working on the budget. I, I assume you're seeing the same things we're seeing?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I mean, the.
So, so I, I would like, I probably would be good to go through some of this, just to,
okay.
Just to, just to see what it looks like. And I don't know, do ti- are town, can townspeople see this or no?
Where's the recap, where's the recap at right now, where you are, Marlene?
Right here. So we, we need to make that up, right here, this one eighty-three, three forty, that needs to be a positive number.
But that can include what the school asked for.
No.
No, it does not.
It doesn't include it.
Okay, it's not.
That's putting the school, excuse me, at, at what it was.
Last year.
Last year.
So that's even with a level funded.
So, no increases at all.
The budgets in here reflect current, pretty much current operations with some moderate increases, contractual increases.
Right.
Increases that, you know, select board and finance committee agreed to when meeting with departments. You know, the library, I mean, they're, they were small. But what the, you know, the scenarios that the fire chief and, and police chief presented are not reflected in here.
Or the schools.
Or the schools.
Right, so those.
The schools number in here is the current.
Or a COLA.
Yeah, it doesn't include a COLA either.
COLA, does it, but it doesn't include the increase to health insurance?
Health in, health insurance is in.
And then the things like utilities and stuff that we've projected.
Right.
Yeah, so that's how, I mean, that's how you kind of arrive at, at least a million, cause.
Right, you're already at two hundred.
Seven plus two, you know, plus a COLA's last year's COLA number was sixty thousand.
Subtract your revenue loss.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, we got it.
See on the screen, the health insurance, so that's an additional sixty-seven thousand dollars.
What, what, what is?
Health insurance.
She's already, she's already deducted that.
That is sixty-seven thousand dollar increase as a result of the six percent.
If we, Marlene, do we have any, if we increased it to sixty-five percent, do we have any idea what that might cost us? I know I'm asking out of the blue question.
We did get that answer from Patty.
I thought you said you had a number you were talking about when you were just, was it sixty thousand?
No, that's the COLA. Well, that's, that was last year's COLA number, so I'm just, it's more than that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, the treasurer did share that with me, um, because she had said the finance committee requested that and I don't know if I have that with me. Making my budget folder in here.
Marlene, just quickly, the Route Five.
Oh yeah.
What, what's going on with that? The sewer.
Five projects?
Yeah.
As far as the debt?
Yeah.
Uh, so that is, let's see, enterprise debt. So right up here at the top of the page.
So, so that's, so that's additional hundred and sixty-five thousand that's coming out of taxation.
That's right.
Is that because the ban, the cost of the ban is?
That is correct. So for the current year, we, we just had the interest, um, payment, the thirty-five, thirty-four. The class weren't reading it quite right.
Okay, we're over a million?
So yeah, that's a, a big increase.
But the interest went from thirty-five, thirty-four to sixty-six, nine?
Yes.
Probably because rates jumped.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's your short term.
Diane, did you, you didn't find that?
So I do have the, the COLA is here. Did you find that?
No.
Okay.
What, what is it?
So a three percent COLA would be approximately sixty, adding sixty-seven thousand nine hundred.
Makes sense because it was sixty thousand last year.
Two hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
And then there's a four percent and five percent calculated here.
So, so that.
Health insurance is a six percent increase.
So all this, all this so far gets us to a million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars for an override. And it, it, it's only, and, and yes, it's only giving the police half of what they want.
Which I don't, I, I, I mean, if, if we're gonna do this, why are we gonna not ask for what the department's asking for? And why would we not include the fire? Why would we take the ambulance stuff out of free cash? Why wouldn't we include it?
Because we're waiting for the results of a study that we have no idea what it's gonna say.
Right.
It's not gonna be cheaper, so why wouldn't you?
Well.
How do you know it's not gonna be cheaper?
If we regionalized or not.
Well, that could be, I mean.
Yeah.
But, I don't know, I guess, why wouldn't you just?
Well, only, only because there's a question out there now because we're doing this study about what the actual results are going to be.
Right.
So then what happens if you make a decision, okay, well, we're not gonna do that? Now you've done an override and you have the money. What are you gonna do with it? Are we gonna give it back? Like, how would we handle, you know what I mean? Like, that's why I think it was really important, like, it was kind of important that we had that answer before this year, but we don't, so, you know, I don't know. I mean, we could try to put in some kind of placeholder, but I don't, because I don't know what the actual costs are gonna be and I don't know what the study's gonna say. And I don't know, it's just a question and I feel like questions aren't good. You know, I mean, if you're gonna ask people for a bunch of money.
I mean, I guess I understand that one, but I don't understand why, if we're gonna ask for an override, why would one department be given everything they're asking for? Another department would just arbitrarily say, we're just gonna ask for fifty percent of what the department head is saying they need to run the department at the level that they believe townspeople expect.
To be honest, it, we were, I was, you know, for me personally, I'm looking, we're, we're, we're pretty close to a million five. And so I'm trying to balance asking for a million five and what I think townspeople are willing to pay. That's, 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 that's the hard thing.
Well, it's always, I mean.
Cause if they come back, I mean, if they come back with the flat out no, which they could, you know, so that, that's my balance. And I added it back in, that brings us to a million, four hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
I mean, and I, and it gets us also, well, we have to have the discussion about if it's done as a lump sum or if it's done as a menu. I know I'm in the minority here, but I favor doing it as a menu. I mean, if you're asking, if you're, if you have to ask to give townspeople control over the budget, then you should let them have a say in the, the budget items that are important to them. And I would hope everybody would vote for all of it. But you'd take a big risk of getting nothing.
And how, and how long would you do that for?
What do you mean?
Well, every year, you're gonna create a budget. So are you gonna earmark that money going forward for the all eternity that that gets spent in the way that it was done?
I mean, the budget will be built and then next year you build, you always build around the last budget, so.
Right, but I'm saying if you give people a choice and say you're gonna take police over fire, then how long do you stick with it? Do we do it for the next ten years, the next twenty years? How long do you keep that money segregated into a special place for that department?
Well, but it go, I mean, I did, I, that seems like kind of a silly question. We build this budget. So let's, for the sake of argument, say they give the police department, they approve a hundred thousand for the police department or two hundred thousand for the police department. It goes into their budget. So next year, a budget process, we're, that's their starting point. It's, it's not like we strip everybody of their last budget and start over every year.
Let's see, the issue is, is that, so your first year, you would have an earmark so that every, everything that got voted, you know, a hundred thousand for this person would, would be set for the first year, but then the following year, it's no longer earmarked. So, but your level's the same. The next board, the next finance committee could, could do something completely different.
Well, and we could this year too. What's the difference?
So you, you have a certain level, but then you're not held to that earmark.
Well, we're not held to anything this year. It's, it's no different than any year.
But it's kind of, um.
Well, it is different because in pre, in most years, you don't, you don't vote on the budget line item by line item. There's never been a town meeting where we've gone through the budget and voted to approve each line item individually. And that's essentially what you're suggesting we do.
Yeah, we go by chunks.
But we vote on the, we take one vote on the budgets.
Right.
In reviewing it, the article is for one amount, one dollar amount.
That's right.
I, I guess I'm, this is, this, it, this whole thing confuses me because if you, you take, you get the override amount, with that, you build the budget, so all of those item, those, those amounts get plugged into school and police and ambulance. And then that's your starting point for next year. I don't under, it's not like.
That's not a menu.
What do you mean?
That's not, you're, if you're gonna vote, if you're gonna vote a menu, it's not like, it's not like a menu like we're gonna buy a COA van and a truck. And then once you buy the COA van, it goes to the COA and then it's just sitting over there and then that's it. You're gonna, you're gonna say, okay, the fire department budget is at X. The school budget is at X, the police department is at X, they all require an override. And now we're gonna vote on them at town meeting. You're gonna have a vote on the police override, you're gonna have a vote.
I get it.
Essentially, you're voting on each individual line item in the budget. That's what you're doing. And that's never been done before. The budget has never been voted like that before. It's always one lump sum as presented.
Well.
And that's the difference.
I mean, it's a different year. I, I don't know, I mean, if you, you vote, you, when you're, when you're voting that budget at town meeting, it, what it does is it triggers that amount in the negative, that one point five million. And you've proposed that some of it goes to police, some of it goes to fire. I mean, I'm not underst, I don't know, I don't understand what, why this is so complicated.
It's not complicated, I, I just feel like it's deceptive in a way because you're, you're acting as if it's going to.
It's the opposite. If we just say to people, just approve one point five million, but we're not showing them exactly where it's gonna go and they have. But I mean, but they don't have.
Shows exactly what it is.
But if, but if you're, you don't, you're not giving them the choice. My, my concern is you're not giving them the choice to make decisions for, for themselves for what they want to support for these, these, this.
I think that's where the problem though is that, that the choice is the select boards. It's, it's not, it's never the people's choice to have every year after year, this much is going to, I mean, that budget's built by the select.
The finance committee.
So you're, you're pretending it's their choice, but then it really isn't.
Well, and, and really, it's not.
We're, we would, we're telling them what that money is going to go for with the budget that we lay out that gets approved out of balance, that triggers.
Right.
It's in there.
Right. That's right. But that's not quite the same as a menu. A menu would be, and, and my other question just about the idea of a menu is, are other things gonna go on the menu? So like, health insurance, can they decide not to pay the increase?
Yes.
So we're gonna literally vote on every single line item one at a time? I don't know, I don't see that as a.
I don't see that very viable and I, I, I do think it just pits us department first department. And, and, and that to me is, even if they all have the best laid out intentions, it's, it's gonna pit, it, it essentially, we're pitting department first department because some taxpayers are gonna go and they're gonna say, you know, I can't afford this, so I'm only gonna vote for this one thing that's important.
If they can't afford part of it, then they can't afford all of it.
And then you're not gonna vote.
So now, so, so you end up taking, you, you risk people not, you're just saying no. Just no.
Your other option is to have different levels of, without making it a menu. You know, and, and you could explain, you know, at this level, we would have the sixty-five percent health insurance, we would have.
I, I, but to, to what you were saying, there'd be no, we, there, they have no assurance that that's what we really do.
Yeah, but it's more of a guidance.
If it wasn't a line by line. I mean.
Well, that's what, that's the problem though, like, how long, and then that's where we're back to, like, what if health insurance goes up twenty-five percent next year? Are we just not gonna pay it? Are we going to, like, so what, eventually what will happen will be, you're gonna have these departments that have this earmark in them that's an override that happened ten years ago. And other costs are gonna go up and things are gonna happen and things are gonna change. And you're still gonna be going back to, yeah, but ten years ago, we voted X number of dollars for this line.
But it's not, but if, if, if we vote an extra three hundred thousand for the ambulance department, it goes onto their line item
Right.
for the coming year, and that's always the starting point for our next budget. We, that's what I'm saying, you, you guys are. You, you guys are, it's making it seem like every year, we set every budget back to zero, and everybody has to start over. That's not, so, if you build that 700,000 into the school budget for FY '24, then it exists there. And when we're in this process next year, it's, it's already in their budget. There's no earmarks anywhere. It's just money we've given them. It's like if we increase Phil's budget by 50,000, we don't, next year, go back and say, "Okay, well, we're not starting at that extra 50,000. We're starting back again." It, that's not, it doesn't, I don't understand what you're talking about earmarks. It's built, it becomes built into the budget.
Right. Exactly.
Yes.
And what if things have to change?
Then what, that's what we do, we're, that's what we talk about all budget season, is the things that change.
Right, except for your, except for what, except for we haven't, in the past, put it up for individual line item votes every single time.
Because we've never had to do it before. We've never been in this point before.
Now, we, we, I think it was like eight years ago, we had a discussion about this at one of the meetings of, do you pit department against department?
That's not what I, I'm not suggesting we pit departments.
But I mean, that's what the discussion was.
I'm suggesting we give voters a choice. And break it down for them about what that final number means. And, sorry, Lydia, you had a question?
Because a two-and-a-half override is not like a debt exclusion where it's...
Correct.
Right.
It's permanent.
It's permanent. It's permanent. So, you vote this $700,000 or $400,000 into the school. It's a permanent 700, 400,000, whatever, for the school. So, in another year, more school choice kids come in. They've got more money. They don't need the $700,000. But we don't have a choice.
You've already voted for it.
You've already voted for it. That is earmarked for that school. So, we don't have a choice. We can't put that somewhere because the fire truck blew up, and we need to get a new fire truck. We can't move that on, on the budget line because it was voted specifically for the school. Where the two-and-a-half override, in general, is for the general budget to be used...
And then, you distribute them.
To distribute.
Right.
As needed.
That's right. And that is exactly the broad...
Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, I think, I think, even if it, even if you, even if you could move it around, you have said to people, "This is what we're gonna do with it."
Right.
And you voted on it. And then, you went to the ballot box, and you vote. I, I don't know what that would look, I don't even know how you do that. I don't know what that would look like at the ballot box. I presume you have to have a dozen questions.
So, then, so then, townspeople could make the assumption that this year, we asked for 1.5 million to be divided up these six ways. But there's no guarantee next year we're gonna do that.
Right. Just like there never is.
There's pretty much, you put it where it's needed.
Right.
Just like all the other tax money we collect.
Just like we do ev...
You have the ability to move it around.
You're scrutinizing the budget and trying to...
And this, if the townspeople vote this 1.5 million, if they did, it, it in no way ma, means that we are gonna be flush with money for the next 10 years. You know, because these are select departments that we, that we, that, that...
At the same time, other departments are staying level funded.
Absolutely. And we don't know how long, you know, so, so, you know...
But you can only go on what your best...
Well, it's only on our best guess.
Then how does other communities do menu-style overrides?
It, it's an option.
It is an option, yeah.
You can do, but it just seems like for the two-and-a-half override, it's for the, the permanent. So, it's a town...
So, it means like, if you, so, if, for the sake of argument, you're saying that if we gave the police department $200,000 through this override, then their department could never go below 200,000? Because they would always have to have... So, I mean, it's kind of like, what, oh, what, what are the chances that any departments are gonna be like, "We don't need any of this money anymore"?
They get a huge grant. Somebody gets a huge grant. The school gets a...
Yeah, but a grant's never for just straight-up operations.
I guess my bigger question would be, why aren't we doing that now, then? We're collecting all this tax money. We're spending it. Why don't we have a town meeting where everyone votes on every single line item, and we can create the budget?
People have the ability to vote on every town, on every line. We just, we, yes, we, they, they take it up to, I mean, for the sake of time, Joe will say, you know, "We're gonna open this discussion, line items 1 through 30." People have the ability to talk about every, except within the school because the school presents one line in their whole budget.
And we don't encourage it just because it could create one heck of a...
Right, exactly, but...
After we've been through with this.
I, I, I kinda feel like people, I, I hope, I really hope that people are relying on the people sitting in this room to do the best job that they can do to put together what the town needs with all the information. Not to just throw it out to town meeting to figure out what the budget should be on one night in 45 minutes. I just don't, I don't see that.
It's a big ask. I just think that...
It is a big ask, but you've been dealing with two-and-a-half, two-and-a-half, two-and-a-half...
No, I under, I understand all of that. I'm just...
Do you, do you offer out listening sessions before town meeting where we invite townspeople to come in and, and speak their, give their opinion, give, give their thoughts on this?
Ask their questions? I mean, I think it's a great idea. I mean, you know, there, there, people are welcome to come to all of these meetings. But there has to, especially if it's gonna just be one ask, there has to be a lot of education around...
Yeah, we, well...
All, what's in there, where it's going.
But in order to do that, and I agree that that absolutely should be done, in order to do that, we have to make decisions about what we're asking for. And we have to do it quickly. Like, we can't just meander around. We have to really decide, like, here's what we think we need, here's what we're gonna ask for, and here's why. And then, we can go forward with that. Because I, otherwise, we can't answer questions.
Carrie, do you have a question?
You guys have been throwing a ton of numbers around. I just wanna ask, you said one-and-a-half million? Daryl, is that roughly? Right, roughly. I know that's not an exact number. But is that everything that's being asked for? Is that one-and-a-half? Or is that only doing what you've talked about, about being level funded and dispersing the way that you talked of group by group?
That includes...
Sorry, I don't wanna sound silly, I just wanna clarify.
That in, that includes $200,000 for the police. That includes 731,000 blah, blah, blah for the school. That includes 60,000 in COLA over COLAs.
It's gotta be 67.
It's up to 67.
67,000, sorry, for COLA. 259,000 to move us from 55% to 65%.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's, that's in your 200, you have a, you're, you have a $200,000 deficit existing right now. So, we cover that, which is made up of a whole bunch of little things. Yep.
Right.
Including $166,000 for the temporary borrowing.
For the temporary borrowing for the Route 5. Health, right.
What else is there?
Fuel, fuel costs, utility costs. All that is added. And the ambulance, what we would suggest is that we would take, like, as we funded it, the extra through free cash in this current year. We would do that next year in '24 while they...
Waiting for the consultant stuff to come back to see where it says to go.
Yes.
Obviously, for the townspeople to be informed.
Right. So, then it's some, so then, the following year, there could be another override ask for ambulance.
Absolutely.
Because my only other question was, is that, Sean, you had earlier, at the beginning of the meeting, maybe I misunderstood you, you had said ambulance-wise, that it would go back two years of what we were funding, which is not what we're currently funding.
No, no, no. On level, on a level fund...
On a level funded, now what's that?
On this budget right here.
That's not with the override. That was what...
Not with the override. That would be, yeah, level...
Well, I, I, I didn't mean that as a statement of fact.
No, 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 I'm not saying you did.
Like, we'd have to kinda think about what to do. Because if you're gonna, if we're gonna start cutting things, other things are gonna happen, and then...
For sure.
How much can you invest? Yeah.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's part of the two budgets. I mean, and we...
So, you're saying the one-and-a-half, though, includes everything that has been requested, basically, from the department? So, police, school, EPW, the insurance increase, the COLA increase. And then, your thoughts are to fund ambulance, fire, based on the current fiscal year's budget? Because the consultant has not... That's all rolled into that one-and-a-half? Or the ambulance is not?
No, no. The ambulance is not. The ambulance is...
Oh, you're into free cash?
Gives in free cash.
I'm sorry, okay.
No, no, that's okay. It's a good question.
But if you did, again, just trying to clarify and understand, if you did put the ambulance request, fire department request for current fiscal year funding into the override part of it, then it's earmarked, correct, for next year? That it's, you know what I'm saying? Like, you guys have talked about that it's in that pot that can be distributed, basically, versus it being, you know...
So, that, so...
But I know it increases the override. I get that part. But I'm just wondering, is it, should we really be pulling it from free cash? For the possibility that we're gonna have to offer it again next year for...
No is the answer, and I think we're enough to think about that.
Okay.
You know, and I'm saying that as the person who came up with the idea that it's not a great idea, but I just don't have a, I don't have a good idea. Yeah.
Well, yeah, because it gets hard. Because if we add the potential ambulance to it, that's what, 200 and additional, it's not quite 300,000. I know we gave him 300,000. He's not spending all of that. But I can't remember what, what...
Well, he has different tiers.
It would be different tiers, but it'd also be how those positions get filled. Like, if all those jobs didn't get filled, shifts didn't get filled at the beginning of the year, which is why there's the extra.
Right. Will you go the public safety budget? I just wanna see...
And I don't, and I don't remember all his, I know he had four budgets.
Oh, sorry.
They're all here somewhere.
Right.
But you would have to, you know, that, you would then...
This is based on current operations. You can see that the, the chief moved monies from fire to ambulance. But I had a conversation with him today, and he came up with an amended number based on current operations. So, this would increase, I believe it was, it would be 342,000 right here.
So, that's already...
So, that's get what we have now for staffing.
Current operations, right. So, I broke it out, 69,000, 653, we come from free cash. But again, that's just a suggestion. Other funds would be ambulance revenue. That's 98,544.
That might not be an override either.
170,855 in taxation.
Can you hear you, Sean?
That might not necessarily, that might not necessitate an override either. You might be able to come up with that, you know, part, as part...
69,000, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so which, so Marlene, I'm sorry. Which budget did you select that's in, in his fire and ambulance?
Based on current operations. The, the current fiscal year's operations.
Just remember, he had different...
He had the, I think he had three different tiers.
So, it's current, so, so it doesn't include the additional 300,000 that we gave him last year?
Uh, yes, it would. So, the money that, so the 180,000 that was added for the 16-hour shifts. And other, then there was ARPA money as well. That was, that's included in there. That's my understanding. This is the funding that he received for this current fiscal year.
For '23.
Is, is this operating budget.
The three, but you said it's 342.
Three, right.
But, okay.
This would be, yes, based on a conversation I had with him, it would be 342,000, not 339.
And, 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 all right. And then, on police, you just kept them based on this year's budget?
It is, but there's a contractual increase in there in the salary.
Contractual, that's fine.
But, okay, so, and that doesn't have the extra money to COSHAC ask?
It does not.
So, if we're doing the so-called level-funded version of this, why are we including his, all of Chief Flaherty's current year with the 300,000? I would think we would do his budget minus the 300,000.
So, go back to the, so using the previous fiscal year?
Using the previous fiscal year because, you know, we bumped up. And, and just, just to see what that... Do you understand what I'm...
I do.
Am I making sense?
I do.
And I'm, you know, I'm literally not trying to take, I'm just trying to get this to a...
Yeah. Well, when you're still 200,000 in the hole, you gotta, on, on this budget.
Well...
Well, and you're decreasing services.
Yeah.
Yes.
By a huge chunk.
Yeah. No, understood.
Oh, yeah.
So, you can see, yeah, the difference here with ambulance salary. He, my understanding is that he moved money from the fire department's salary line to ambulance.
Okay.
So I don't know how much of that would be for the previous, the prior fiscal year.
The sixteen-hour current model, so three thirty-nine.
Yeah, and he sent an amendment a couple of weeks ago for the current, for the current operations. Should I have that here?
I just, I just wanna make sure, if we put forth this level-funded budget.
The same for everybody, yeah.
We're apples to apples, that's all. Because we know, like, if you go to the school, it'll be four hundred thousand dollars less from a level-funded budget.
Right, the only.
To take away the money you gave him last year, for this fiscal year, the money that we gave last year to go into this fiscal year, that would be four hundred thousand dollars less.
Well, what they needed to go to so-called level services with contractual and stuff would be an additional.
Right, but last year when we voted at town floor, it was an additional like four hundred and fifty-five thousand bucks or whatever.
Right, it would be.
For the school specifically, and obviously, we did that for other departments or whatever, because other funding too.
Yeah, yeah. Just, it just, it, and it's really a starting point, I mean, and, and the hope is that people will support an override.
Let's hope so.
It's, it's roughly in the neighborhood of eight hundred and fifty dollars, is that right?
What is?
Over, one point five million.
So Division of Local Services has a calculator online.
Yeah, that's pretty nice.
It's pretty.
I like, when I thought, yeah, you asked me about that, and I was talking to the treasurer, and she's the one, someone told her about it, and I was like, oh, wow, this is nice.
So we plugged in, and this is like, back in February, we plugged this in, one point five million, and for, for FY twenty-three, average single-family tax bill impact would be eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
And what, what was the average, what was that valuation, like?
That valuation is three hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine, and that would be.
I bet you that's right on the average.
The current tax bill is four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Before the eight fifty?
Before the eight hundred.
Yeah, that's correct.
So your average family is paying five thousand dollars a year, it would be an extra eight hundred and fifty. Just to give it some context.
So when do you need us to make a decision so that you can have?
I need everything by April one.
Not that far away, yeah.
Not close.
So what's the best way to do this, do you present, like you said, a budget that's out of balance by what you need to override, or do you present two budgets?
Well, you gotta have.
You have to have one that's balanced, in case it.
You do, yeah.
Yeah, you have to do both.
Um, so I know we generally meet on Tuesdays, and I am not available, next Tuesday, I was wondering, is there a possibility that we could meet on Monday, next week, because I don't really wanna miss a week.
I can't meet Monday.
You can't meet Monday.
Could you Wednesday?
I can meet Monday.
I can meet Monday.
I can too.
I cannot meet Wednesday.
I can't do Wednesday, I could do maybe Thursday night, but.
I could do Thursday.
I could do Thursday.
I think.
I can't do Thursday either.
Well, you guys can, I mean, I just was trying to figure out how to.
Yeah.
Be here. One way or another, you need to meet next week.
Right.
It's, you know, there's no.
Yeah.
Probably for the next two weeks.
Yeah, I think we have, we're set up for the next three weeks, every Tuesday, right, Marlene?
Yeah, pretty much, next Tuesday, April fourth, and April eighteenth, I don't, we may need to meet the eleventh.
And I know I can't meet the eleventh.
And you need this one, Lydia?
The eleven?
The eleven.
The eleven.
She needs it by the eleventh, so that gives us, that essentially gives us two weeks.
Right. We need to have it done before that.
So.
Well, I mean, what, we know we wanna put it forward, right, there's, it's, we have to, we have an obligation to give townspeople that option.
Right, what I need by the eleven is the two and a half override question.
Right.
That's gonna go on the ballot, so I can get the.
Yes, you don't need a budget.
I don't need a budget.
The budget, but does, it doesn't have a number plugged into it?
On the question, yes.
Yeah, so there has to be a number.
So.
Well, right, but you, I mean, if, if things happened between April and May, you could still make adjustments in the budget.
Yes.
But the question has a dollar amount associated with it.
Right, that's right.
Which is on the ballot, on the ballot.
Right.
Well, I mean, what are you gonna do, if you have to make an adjustment in the budget, you have to make an adjustment in the budget.
So, ballot goes to print, P.
Right.
Yeah. So, Marlene.
Right.
Is it reasonable by next week that you could kinda have what we are calling our level-funded budget kinda put together, because that's our starting point, right?
This, this budget.
This budget.
Right.
Don't we have to figure out how to get down that hundred?
Yeah, we need to make that a positive number.
Right, so, 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 so.
We aren't there yet.
So we're, we're still off a hundred.
We're still, yeah.
But even if we make adjustments, what happens when we make adjustments to the fire and get them back?
Right, so what I would do tomorrow is, you know, ask the chief if we could meet, because I could, I could reduce the ambulance numbers to the previous fiscal year, but then his fire department numbers are gonna have to change, because as I said, he moved money from the fire department operations, particularly salaries, to the ambulance salary.
It, it, we just have to get back to.
So I could just do that with both, fire and ambulance, right now, and put those numbers back in as they.
And you can adjust them with the chief later, I'm just kinda curious what that does to the hundred and eighty thousand deficit.
But if we're not putting fire and ambulance money in the override request, then we have to keep that money in the line now, so that he can operate at, at the level he's operating at until we figure out everything else, that's not the place to take it.
That's not.
Well, we're just moving it back to where it was, just so you can.
Twenty-two, you're talking about fiscal year twenty-two.
Yeah, we're just trying to get it down to a level, once, once we get that, get rid of that hundred and eighty and level that, then we can, then we can move up with the one point five million, and that one point five million would also include what we're doing in free cash, so it would resurrect those numbers, but if the override doesn't pass, this has to be zero. Or, or better.
What do you mean it would resurrect what you're doing with free cash, in the, in the one point five million dollar override?
In a one point five million override, what we're suggesting with fire and ambulance is that we, we, we add the three hundred thousand or whatever it is from free cash to his budget, just as we did last year, or this current year. Yeah, that's what we would do.
And what's the scenario without the one point five million?
None, then we have, we have to figure that out, we're not giving anybody anything, why are we gonna get fired there, right, school doesn't get it, nobody gets it, police doesn't get it, I'm not sure we're at zero, we have to get to zero before we decide.
Right.
What, who gets it, you know what I mean?
I see, I do know what you mean.
And I'm not trying to be harsh, and I, I apologize to police, fire, school, everybody, but.
You have to get back to a zero dollar to start building.
Right, we're just.
I understand.
And especially because you need to know what that zero means, townspeople need to know what that zero means.
Yeah.
If you, if you wanna stay at this, this is what it means, this is what you have for police coverage, this is what you have for ambulance coverage, this is what positions you lose at school or whatever, maybe.
The argument just is, you didn't build that into the budget last year, you, you took it, you took it at a one-time expense.
Right.
You know, you just.
Yeah.
So you don't really have it in there, actually, unless you take it at a one-time expense again.
Right.
And her free cash is at?
Free cash is two thirty-six, one eighty-seven.
Doesn't give us the three hundred thousand. Yeah.
She can't do much with that, I mean.
No.
Nope.
No. Oh, and, you know.
And there's always the snow and ice and all that.
What?
Right. We do, yeah, we know we have a deficit.
So we got snow and ice, and then we do have certain things in the capital budget, like the, usually, the chief has the, the gear, turnout gear, and then, then the school has.
Yeah, so there's no money for capital items anywhere except on a debt exclusion, correct?
Well, there's some capital items, I was gonna suggest that maybe we look at funding from ARPA, there's that, yeah.
Yep.
And there's always stabilization.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, if you had to plug a hole.
I know it's, this is as, as, as harsh as it's been that I can ever remember, doing budgets, and Diana, we've been doing this for a long time.
We have been doing this a long time.
So.
Yeah, so will I.
It's pouring.
It is pouring.
Well, how do you, so. Buck's gotta stop someplace, right? If we move that back, if we move the one-time money out, moved it back to twenty-two, we would be pretty close to.
We would.
That's a hundred and seventy-six something, is that about right?
Yeah, I, I would agree that.
Which is the one-time money?
Yeah, I mean, I, I only, I just, I just took this year, subtracted twenty-two from it, you know, so it's roughly a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars-ish, somewhere around that, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I mean, that would be like fuel.
Do you have twenty-two's numbers there, burning?
Twenty-two's?
Yeah, I do.
So why don't I?
Oh, no, I don't.
Sean, the one-time money you're referring to was fuel, electricity?
No, that was in fire.
He was referring to the ambulance money.
Ambulance, yeah, we used.
See, that's why I feel like, though, pulling that out, I mean, if you, if you do this, if you have everybody submit level funding, there, you know, I understand that there could be changes in their department, but if you don't.
It's not really level.
It, it's, it's a huge hit to fire an ambulance, if you pull that one-time money out.
Right, but because we didn't really fund it is the problem.
Yeah, it was never officially funded, and you gotta think about the school.
It was never long.
Four hundred thousand dollar hit that they're, they're taking.
This is twenty-three.
For level services.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is.
Did that change that two hundred thousand that you guys were talking about?
Oh, that's town meeting.
Yeah, this is last year, yeah, for the current year, that's for the current fiscal year.
From the school?
By taking both out, the ambulance money and the other one.
We, we never, I don't think we added it to the school.
I didn't know, oh, I got you, I didn't know what changes that two hundred thousand you wanted to talk about.
No, no, we didn't, we didn't add the four hundred thousand to the, to the school, we just, we took the number they presented this year and kept that number, five point two million or whatever it was, right? But.
Yeah, yeah, the education, yeah, that's, that didn't, this does not reflect the increase they're looking for.
This doesn't even, this doesn't even get them to level services, correct?
That doesn't give them their contractual increases, anything.
That's right.
Nothing, okay, I just wanna make sure, that's, that's, that's our, that's our apples to apples.
But we may also have, we may have, I mean, but that's a problem, because we do have to do that, we, we have contractual stuff, we have contractual stuff.
We already have contractual obligations in here, so we would have to do that in the school.
Contractual to the school.
You have to add to everything, because it's contractual.
So the number will be bigger than one eighty-three?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, presumably, we're gonna meet our contractual obligations, if at all possible, so.
Yeah, the, what, what they're presenting on a level service, you've got five point two, and their level service is five point seven.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, I don't know what their contractual obligations would be, oh, well, how much?
She's saying we include contract negotiations in that window, excuse new teaching ESP contracts.
All right, but what about, hang on, sorry.
But that's, that's something Marlene could talk to the, talk this week to the superintendent and make sure that at least.
Oh.
At least that the contractual stuff is taken.
Yeah, and the school's itemized budget, it's in there, but I wouldn't know what lines that.
Yeah, hang on though.
Those increases have been added to.
Well, that doesn't, yeah, that doesn't matter.
Right.
I just wanted to see. I'm trying to figure out what, how much choice revenue they're using. Have to cut.
They're only using the choice revenue that becomes available this year, they have that number somewhere, right?
Well, yeah.
Where's that number? Anyway, doesn't, doesn't much, but if we come back next week and at least get this, and then, then we can build up, build up from there. I still, I still think.
Are you thinking that we would present a level?
This would, right, this would be one of.
Funded budget, level services budget, level, no, level funded budget, and then.
Less contractual obligations.
Yeah, it's not a hundred percent level funded.
Whatever we have to spend, right, and somehow balance it.
Yeah, right.
So anything we're obligated to pay, you know, whether it be utilities or contracts or health insurance increases.
Correct.
Yeah, we can.
And then the other article would have.
Yeah, we should do that and just see, like, if we can even do that.
Yeah, I'm not really sure we can do that.
I'm not sure we can, yeah.
Do what, present two budgets?
No, no, we can definitely do that, I, I'm not sure that we can create a level-funded budget.
The level-funded budget, we need money just to get, get the level.
Well, you would probably have to pull something out of stabilization or free cash or something, just to get it.
In order to make that work.
You might have to, yeah.
Yeah.
Or both.
Yeah.
Just wipe everything out.
Can, yeah.
Or cut, make cuts.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that would be.
That I had.
The next, well, but let's get, if we get to a starting point, if, you know, that gives us kinda homework for next week, sorry, I won't be there, but at least we can figure out where, where we go from there, and then maybe by the following week, by the second or fourth.
Fourth.
Fourth, then.
The final decisions would have to be made.
Decision will have to be made, right?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It does.
You know, it is crazy, Darryl, we have been doing this a long time with Sean, it's never been this bad.
Never.
Oh, we've made, we made across-the-board cuts numerous times back in.
But we're not talking about one point five million, I mean.
No, no, but we, but we made cuts like, we made across-the-board three percent cuts before.
Yeah.
Literally, you know, which, the, yeah, the thing I'm, what I'm afraid of is just in this environment, if you do that, if you do something like that.
Yeah, when you did that before, you didn't have employment where it's at.
Right, you didn't have other things happening, like, you, you were.
Start doing that, people are gonna walk away from the school, employees are gonna walk away from working here, because they're gonna find work in other, in other places.
Yep, that's right.
And we don't, we don't want that to happen.
Right.
I mean, I don't know, Phil, I'd be, have we, have we got the sewer plant operator filled now?
Yes.
At a cost.
At a cost.
At a cost, and, and are we still per the state, technically, on the, on the borderline of enough, enough certified people?
No, even with the water, I mean, you're not.
We're not, right, by state standards.
When they come in and they do their report, they always say that, you know, you're half a.
Half a person away, right.
Operator short.
Right, and, and that's why I bring it up, I mean, that, we've been, we've been kinda bare bones with all this stuff.
I mean, I think over the years, you've been lucky, really, you know, you've been lucky.
Makes you wonder how we've done it.
DEP stays on top of your plant operators, too, and, and the license requirements.
And they know, they know the situation for getting operators, they, the DEP, that's what, you know, I mean, they're, they're always there, they're always looking at licenses, but they know on the other end that there's nobody coming up into that field.
Right.
Yeah, that's another problem.
That's why any wastewater and water operator having, they have a choice, they can go anywhere, you know, they can go anywhere for better money, there's always better choices.
Right.
There's so need.
You can't blame them.
No.
Well, if you look around, you know, like, everywhere I drive around, there are signs out for that DEP.
Oh, yeah.
And you could never get those jobs.
No, exactly, it's every sector, I mean, that's, all I do is talk to businesses all day long.
All your businesses in Springfield must be in that.
In, everywhere.
Yeah, well, and, you know, I mean, like, in some, in some sectors, like, you know, the one I work in, like, hiring is, you know, there, it's always been kinda low-paid and hard, now it's exceptionally hard to hire, but those jobs weren't always exceptionally hard to get, but like, the, like, jobs working for towns used to be kinda hard to get.
Oh, primo.
Now, you can't get anybody.
Or even the state, everything.
Yes.
I mean, in my community in Westfield, there are twenty people short in the DEP.
Yeah.
It used to be a snap, you would have put that thing out, and there would have been twenty-five people applying in the first day.
Eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Oh, yeah, how many unfilled nursing positions are there in the state, there's thousands unfilled nursing positions in the state.
That's why, you know, and I think.
And I would say teachers are in that pool.
You know, that you have to try to retain your employees.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the private sector, the private sector has the ability to be a little more nimble, and they can offer different benefits, we, we just don't have the ability to do that.
Well, in the company that I'm part of, or in our co-op, we have plants in Vermont, no employees, you, there, there's no people to be, people are leaving for good reason, for whatever, and no matter what you pay, you can't find people, huge absenteeism in plants, it's, it's, it's crazy.
It's gonna lead to burnout of the people who are there.
Yeah, well, we've learned that lesson numerous times, right, like, how many times do people, how many times has somebody left and we hired the replacement for less money than what we're paying that?
Has that ever happened? It's never happened, we always wind up paying more in the end for a new person, because.
All right, so for this, for the sake of time, for this evening, we're done, we know what we're gonna try to accomplish next week, I mean, I can move to Monday, but I don't I mean, I can move to Monday, but I don't know how other people feel.
Sean can't do Monday, so you guys, you guys just do Tuesday, I'll, I'll be okay, so. I'll, you know, I'll be here on the, on the 4th.
Do you want me to leave sometime in between?
I was going to ask if yes, if you'd like to do that, sure.
Play Excel.
Yeah.
Wow, yeah, you guys have all the time.
I have some, I have some questions about the water sewer, you know, whether transfers can, you know, 'cause we're, we're making more money now with the sewer department, I mean, can things be allocated differently or...
Yeah, well, you're restricted because it's an enterprise fund too.
Right.
Do you mean?
Some shared...
Water and sewer funds for other operations?
I'm just making sure that everything that, that it costs is being captured.
Oh, I see, in their operating budget.
I mean, it has varied over time.
It has.
You know, like, how much the fuel salary gets paid out of it, or, or the treasure collector, or the...
Or even the accountants, or things like that, you know.
So I bumped up some of the indirect costs, and I reviewed that with Phil. We did actually increase the sewer wages, we just did that at the end of last week as a result of the, meeting the operator, 'cause we have to retain that operator, so we're, we're including costs in the wages for that. But I, I can just, you know, quickly go through and show you where I, I did make some increases in the indirect costs, and, you know, I, I think it's, it's fair, we haven't increased these in quite some time. So on the accountant's side, I increased this from 500 to 1,500, and, and that, that could change, but we also have to make sure that we can cover it with, you know, in receipts.
We also have to pass DLR.
Right, I had a conversation with the accountant about this, so I mean, 500 is...
Nothing.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
If you spent any time...
Yeah, for the treasurer, I increased this, oh, we're looking at increasing it from 3,000, so that, yeah, I haven't done that yet.
There's all that billing and...
Right.
Yeah, right, if you went out and contracted for that, it would cost you...
Yeah, this line here...
So that line you're showing is what's coming from water sewer?
Yes.
Thank you.
So technology, I, I increased that from 1,000 to 2,500.
On the, you know, on the flip side of that, the reality is that we pay the bills over at water and sewer anyhow, you know, at some level, like, we're supporting some of that stuff.
Right.
So...
Oh, Marlene, when tax title money comes in, that goes to free cash, right?
Yes.
Yes, it does, it closes that right.
Now, are we able to, on water sewer, if we bumped up some of the, if some of the revenues are up, can they take, you know, take on some of the debt?
Yeah, that's another question.
That, um, has gone to the town side.
Taxation wouldn't have to get hit with...
Right, and, and I was actually doing some research.
And maybe there's not enough, I don't know. Well, they could take on as much as good as they could bear, you know, I mean, really, right? I mean, it's all theirs, really.
Right.
I mean, there's no, no legal reason you can't...
So my question is, so last, for the current fiscal year, we, we did fund some of the debt from retained earnings, and I'm proposing that we do the same here for the rotating biological contractor, contractor three, and actually, this is the last year for that one. The wastewater facility gravity thickener project is being covered from retained earnings.
I see that.
And, oh, that was it. My que, debt, the bonds, the debt exclusion bonds, I don't think we can do that.
Even if the project is enterprise?
Right, like, say, for example, water and sewer, yeah, the water and sewer improvements on Route 5.
No, yeah, 'cause that's the root...
It's a debt exclusion, right, it's both debt exclusion, I don't think you can, yeah.
But, but...
I sort of answered my own question last week about that.
But there's so much, there's so much other stuff you could put the money into, you know what I mean? Like, you could spend all the money without going anywhere near that debt exclusion on Route 5.
Right.
You could...
What, what, what about the 12 million that we're borrowing to fix the plant? When do we, when is that going on the bill?
12 million? So the treasurer's in the process of, of doing that right now.
When is that starting?
Phil?
It's at 50% design, so I can't see it starting this construction season.
Yeah, but that 12, the design is still part of the 12 million though, so we don't have the, you know, we're, we're paying cost for the design work.
But we haven't, we haven't borrowed the 12 million yet.
That's right, we haven't.
We've only borrowed what we've needed for the design part of it.
You're probably, we're probably what, a couple of years out from borrowing the actual...
Yeah, plus, you know, they're still waiting word from USDA to see what percentage they're gonna have.
Right.
Oh, so we don't know that yet? Oh, it's only been a year.
I thought we had a letter on that.
Sorry, Phil.
So I talked to the USDA office, they've received their money for these projects, and they are anxious to get Hatfield's, you know, funding in place. I just need to physically go over there and show my driver's license and birth certificate, because I will have access to the town's account for this federal, the, the previous treasurer had access, and so now we need, Patty and I need access to it, and they need somebody for the business.
And then they can calculate that.
Right. He, he didn't disclose the amount today, he just said they're anxious to get the money to Hatfield.
Well, we're anxious to get it.
That's what I told him. I said, "That's what we wanna hear." Yeah, so down at the bottom here, underwater, there's the other payment from retained earnings, I thought there were three. So that's the water filtration project.
So traditionally, were these being funded by taxation, and so it's just...
Up until last year, they were funded from taxation.
Okay.
So I said, say, up until last year.
Out of necessity.
Correct.
We didn't have, we didn't have enough, they, we weren't charging enough, there wasn't enough money.
Right, that's right.
Right, but we're seeing an improvement...
Right.
In balancing of how this is...
And, and one of the things we wanna, I would think Phil and his team would wanna make sure is that we're putting some money into, in case you have a water main break, or in case Route 5, so we've got, we've got, got a little, I can't remember what you called that, is it a little bit of a reserve fund?
Retained earnings, yeah.
Retained earnings, well, we built the 50,000 into the water budget last year for leaks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought you did do that, yeah.
And, you know, if you have a leak, I mean, you know, if you have a leak on Route 5, it's $100,000.
I, I know.
Right, so.
And in, and...
But that's important with this, with this $12 million sewer plant, and this is what didn't happen the first time we built the sewer plant.
Yeah.
Which is, you build the sewer, you redo the sewer plant, it doesn't need any work, and you have to charge enough and set it aside so that when it does, we're not doing this.
Right, yeah.
And we, we built it, and then we just, and we, and we went, yeah, we went, at one point, like, eight years without raising sewer rates.
Right.
You know, and it's like, 'cause we didn't need the money, but then, when we did need the money, we didn't have it.
I mean, it all came to like, when you applied for the original USDA loan, and they said, "You're not charging them."
Yeah.
Or you were under a...
So I just quickly wanna show you, this is...
Like, going back to the retained earnings discussion is that, you know, in order to fund, you have to know what is certified.
For retain, oh, it can only be certified retained earnings, right?
So, you know, to say, "Well, we're gonna pay this, this, and this out of, out of retained earnings," well, you need the retained earnings certified number.
Don't we base this year's retained, I mean, on, on, on last year?
That's, yeah, what was certified as of July 1, yeah, so right here, water and sewer retained earnings, we're using a total of 219,062.
And how much of that are we using in this budget? How much of the 219,000? Are we, in other words, do we have some of the, as Phil said, saved somewhere?
So the total amount that was certified in retained earnings?
Yeah.
260,324, and of that, we're using the 219,62.
Okay, so there's the $50,000.
So far.
Okay.
So also, I just wanna scroll back here to the general fund debt tab.
Yeah.
So according to the treasurer, the short-term interest in issuance is gonna be higher, she's just waiting to get that.
Because of interest rates.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Bad time to be borrowing money.
Very bad time, yeah.
So we did have a truck come off, a fire tanger truck come off. And then, you remember this current fiscal year, we made some double payments?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Town hall renovation's done.
Well, not yet, Sean. Still good.
You know, it's just a good thing that we had, with the ARPA money flying around, that we were able to take so many things off the capital plan over the last couple of years with ARPA funds.
Right.
That was a huge benefit. Those were the days. We knew, right? We knew that...
You're not the only community that, that, with some of the ARPA funds going to an operating budget.
Yeah, but we really, yeah, but...
And now, you're in, they're in the same predicament as you were, is that, that was the one-time funding now.
But we only did that with ambulance.
Yeah.
We didn't use ARPA.
Use it on other...
No, just there.
I did provide a draft copy of the annual town meeting warrant, but it's a very early draft still, I'd like to get this buttoned up very soon, but we're waiting on zoning by law changes. Capital projects aren't on there, community preservation articles have been added, there's a citizens petition, and then, you know, the first page or first two articles are just the standard.
Boiler plates.
Yeah.
I was just leafing through that.
And then there's some, an article, we're closing out some projects.
Usually something like that every year.
Marlene, make yourself a note, we have to add the, the override question to Article 1.
Oh, correct, we would, yeah.
We submitted that really, really early before there was even any topic.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And everything, so it's not, it's not in there right now.
Yeah, once you receive that question from my office, then, yeah, it'll get added.
Well, I think it's just gonna be really important to make townspeople understand what... Okay, so, for the sake of that, are we, we're done with the budget portion of this evening, 'cause we still have other items to get...
This evening, yeah, but we'll be, what's that?
Okay, thank you.
To stay, if you, if you're...
Or we can go home.
If you're so inclined.
Okay, sure, Friday morning probably be good for me, I'm quite tied up tomorrow and Thursday.
You know who the trip is.
Meetings, meetings during the day, but Friday, I'm open. Friday morning work for you? Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll look at Thursday's schedule too, maybe Thursday, there might be some time. Okay, all right.
So we just have, so...
So I know it's getting late.
It's getting late, and I am, so, we did the COA van, we did the, we have a fire, we have this in here.
You voted that, the mini-pump alarm?
No, this is Nicole Thornton.
Okay, yes, the fire chief has the authority to hire, so the board's never voted that you...
So we don't, we just sign.
You authorize the personnel.
We don't want it to vote on it.
Don't vote, we just sign it.
Is Lydia still here?
We just sign it.
I think she left, is this yours, Ed? Ed?
Ed, is that yours?
Is this yours?
I don't think so.
Must be Lydia's.
Ed, you just need to sign that. What else did we have, then?